Ms. Scanlon, can I get a roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Adriana.
Here.
Councilmember Joyner.
Here.
Councilmember Carl Skin.
Yeah.
Councilmember Lawrence.
Here.
And Mayor Silhaj.
Here. All right, moving on, we'll have a report from closed session. The city attorney, Ms. Milankoff, will report out on our closed session meeting from this week and I believe last.
Correct. Thank you, Mayor Silhaj. So the city council met in closed session on the 20th of this month, and that was to discuss the appointment of an interim city manager. As you can see from our regular business agenda, we are making a recommendation that council move forward with the appointment of Mr. Mark Scott. And then from our session this evening, May 25th, staff did receive direction, but there is no reportable action at this time.
Thank you very much. All right, we will move on to item four, the pledge of allegiance, which Councilmember Lawrence has offered to provide for us.
Please all rise and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Phil. We'll move along to agenda modifications. Does anyone have modifications to tonight's agenda that they would like to put forward?
No, ma'am.
All right, seeing none. And we'll go to presentations. We have none tonight, and so we'll move along to item seven, the hearing from the public. Ms. Scanlon, do we have any members of the public who would like to comment on non-agenda items?
Yes, Mayor. I did not receive anything prior to the meeting, but Mr. Garabedian, please go ahead.
Good evening, council members. Mike Garabedian, actually, I wanted to make an agenda modification suggestion. Am I too late for that?
Yes.
I guess the public doesn't do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Byron.
Thank you, Gwen. Madam Mayor, council members, city staff, Byron Chapman, 12 Bridges area. Two items, one good news and the others maybe not so good news. I attended the planning commission meeting on May the 19th, and by the way, that was extremely refreshing, and I'll get to that in a second. The not so good news was had to do on the item at that meeting on 9A. It stated that it was a public workshop to solicit public comment for a particular circulation of an ERI report for the Village Five project. And it also stated it was not a public hearing. The city invited interested parties to provide comments. At that time, the city attorney slash code enforcement officer told the public to, as basically specifically, what to say and what not to say. Questions could not be asked because he would not be answered. Most importantly, how do you make comments on a document that's not attached to the agenda? That was beyond me. So the ACO, that's the Attorney Code Enforcement Officer, several residents had questions, comments, and the ACO did not deter any of them, which I found very refreshing. Now, the good news is on the agenda, page two for the planning commission, item number five, towards the bottom of the first paragraph, it states, "An opportunity will be provided for citizens wishing to speak on non-agendaized items summarily request recognition and address the planning commission. Five-minute time limits may be placed on citizens' comments." Maybe incredible. So with that, I would hope that the city manager, city staff, and the mayor would go and look at the end of that report, because you see, there were three planning commissioners that spoke out about that, because they realized that the residents were basically being chastised by the ACO. They were Mr. Eric Johnson, Mr. Tony Matting, and Mr. Gerald Harmon. All three of those gentlemen made the effort and then some in order to tell the public to stay engaged. We want to hear from you. It's not that way. Now, the second item is, also has to do with the ACO. The city attorney was hired to be a full-time city attorney for the city, not a part-time first-line supervisor. I don't know why the council has a hard time grasping this, but for 36 months, three years, the ACO has demonstrated that all full-time work as a city attorney isn't necessary, because they can get other things done. I hope you're paying attention and making notes. The salary needs to be adjusted. Apply it towards the police department for an additional officer or the fire department. Anything, but just write the check and not even think about what you're doing. That position, highly overpaid for what it has to do, and I think you need to address it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Scott Lehman. Please go ahead.
Scott, can you unmute? Yes, we can. Sorry about that. Thank you for the opportunity to speak for the council tonight. I just wanted to acknowledge Jennifer Hansen's accomplishments. I really enjoyed working with Jennifer over the past few years. I've been with the school district for 28 years and superintendent as 15, and really Jennifer was just the best city manager as we kind of worked through many issues. And some of the things, and you might think that she's just a friendly person and wonderful to get along with, but in addition to that, we also worked together on school resource officers and really bumped up just the presence of safety in our district. We also worked together on the library and with its opening and its accommodation for the high school students, which is just awesome. Development really was better off with us working together, and I really do want to thank Jennifer for that also. And then really in kind of what really is probably the most famous part of Jennifer and I working together, we got all of joint use agreements down to like 16 pages, which really was an accomplishment, and I think it really was better off as we kind of moved forward with everybody being able to use our facilities in the most kind of tax-wise manner as possible. So tonight, I just wanted to take a few minutes and thank Jennifer for her service, not only to our city, but also her partnership with the school district. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Mary Nader. Go ahead, please.
This is Stan Nader. I'm using my wife's laptop this evening. Mayor and council members, I would like to read a section from chapter one of the Brown Act titled, "It's the People's Business." In enacting this chapter, the legislature finds and declares that the public commissions, boards, councils, and other public agencies in the state exist to aid in the conduct of the people's business. It is the intent of the law that their actions be openly taken openly and that their deliberations be conducted openly. The people of this state do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies which serve them. The people in delegating authority do not give the public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what not is good for them to know. The people insist on remaining informed so that they may retain control over the instruments they have created. In recent months, city council members and city staff refer to the public meetings of the city as business meetings for the city to conduct their affairs. And during public hearing statements are made that questions from the public cannot be answered during the meetings. I do not believe that the aforementioned statements comport with what I just read from the Brown Act. The city council meetings are for the public to engage with their elected officials and understand the items the council is looking to enact. I would hope there would be a realization that the council meetings are there to conduct the people's business, and citizens need to be treated with respect and allow their participation in the meetings. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Richard Pearl. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm just following it up on Scott Lehman's comments about Jennifer. I certainly appreciate them also. But I would also like to commend Scott for his years, decades of service to the school district and to the city of Lincoln. He's been exemplary leader, and he's leaving the school district in fantastic shape. So thank you very much.
Thank you. No other hands are raised, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we will bring it back up here, and we will move along to item eight, the consent agenda. All matters on the consent agenda are considered routine business and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the city council or resident requests a specific item be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. Any items removed will be considered after the remainder of the consent agenda. Do any of my colleagues wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to remove item 8M for a question or two, please.
Anyone else? All right, hearing none. We'll move along to the public. Do we have any requests, Ms. Scanlon?
Yes, one hand is raised. Mr. Garabedian, it looked like he put his hand down, so it must have been on item 8M as well.
All right, do I have a motion?
Hold on, his hand went back up. Mr. Garabedian, which item?
Thank you. Yes, that's correct, 8M. And I thought item 10E should be actually heard before that, since it seems to be on the same subject.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we're removing item 8M, and otherwise, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right.
Thank you. Yes. Councilmember Joyner.
Yes.
Councilmember Adriana.
Yes.
Councilmember Carl Skin.
Yes.
Councilmember Lawrence.
Yes.
And Mayor Silhaj.
Yes. All right, let's move along to item 8M. I'm getting to it myself. Adopt Resolution 2021-96. It's long, so it has to do with the wastewater capital replacement oxidation ditch, and we will ask Ms. Hansen to give us a real brief staff report, if that works for you, Paul, before.
Oh, yeah. Jen, would you rather the question first, or you want to go ahead and do a staff report?
Either way that the council desires, I'm game for.
Why don't you go ahead, and if you don't answer my question somewhere in the midst of that, I'll go ahead and ask you.
Sure, no problem. So the item before city council this evening, as Mayor Silhaj referenced, is a multi-part item. The item is essentially related into a capital improvement project, CIP 459, which is referred to as the Wastewater Treatment Reclamation Facility Oxidation Ditch Aerator Conversion and Pondliner Project. Currently, the wastewater treatment reclamation plant has three oxidation ditches, and the oxidation ditches are really considered the workhorses for biological oxygen demand loading, or otherwise known as the solids loading at a wastewater plant. Our plant is currently hitting capacity limitations as it relates to loading. And when we refer to biological oxygen demand capacity, that essentially is referring to the amount of oxygen that the bacteria within the oxidation ditch needs to eat the organic material that comes in. So the organic material is food matter or fecal matter, fecal waste. And so currently, our wastewater plant is hitting those capacity limitations on being able to meet its biological oxygen demand loading capacity requirements that are not just required by our permit, but are also by the plant's permit, but are also required to treat not only current sewage, but also plant sewage related to new development. Because there are three separate oxidation ditches out at the wastewater plant, there is currently one oxidation ditch that is the newest ditch that works off of a diffuse oxygen system or diffuse air system as opposed to a rotor system. The two originally built oxidation ditches work off of these large rotors. So in order for the bacteria to eat the organic material, it needs oxygen to do so. And now oxygen is introduced in the first original two ditches from the rotor system. The rotor system are these giant metal rotors that essentially have big metal teeth on them that as it goes through the waste stream, it pulls oxygen or air into the system, which allows the system to function. Unfortunately, due to poor design and also age of the plant, the rotors are failing at a rapid pace. Currently, we have one entire oxidation ditch offline. In order for the city to go into the winter timeframe, once it starts raining, we require all three oxidation ditches to be functioning properly. Currently, we only have two oxidation ditches functioning properly. One of the challenges that we are currently having is that we need that third ditch back up online before the rains hit this winter, or we could be in the position of discharging raw sewage. When this project was originally contemplated back in 2019, as indicated in the staff report, it was contemplated to remove the rotor system and replace it with a diffused air system that is similar in nature to the new ditch that was more recently built. This is a more energy-efficient method for running the oxidation ditches, as well as it will also reduce maintenance costs and reduce time for the ditch to become offline. Those big rotors, the big fans on the rotors break often. They get hair and waste wrapped around them, and they just simply snap. If you went out and took a look at one right now, you'll see that, you know, it has like 100 teeth, and it's missing most of its teeth at this point. There is an option to repair the rotors into their current state. However, that is not a very viable option, because it doesn't provide the energy efficiency cost, which will save our rate pairs approximately $200,000 a year, as well as it's older technology and requires additional maintenance. So when the city originally put forth this project, it was put forth in conjunction with doing a pond liner project. So there's also maturation ponds located at the wastewater plant. Those maturation ponds are currently not aligned, and they would run more efficient, be more effective if they were aligned, and also require less maintenance if they're aligned. Due to the cost of this particular project and to the urgent nature of completing this project, staff is proposing with action before city council tonight to remove the pond liner portion from the capital improvement project. So now here comes the big, big problem with this particular item. So it gets a little bit complex, so stick with me. When the county joined in with the city related to the regional sewer project and signed in with the COJA agreement, which is the regional sewer agreement that we have with Placer County. Our sewer takes waste from the North Auburn Service Territory area. There is a pump station up on Jogger Road, that pump station, then pumps waste into a 14-mile force main. That force main gets to the plant, and their sewage is joined in with ours. Currently, there is a dispute going on related to how the finances of this particular agreement works. And two things are essentially occurring. One of those things is related to that their operational charge is not sufficient to cost or pay for their fair share portion of operational expenses. And the second item is related to the fact that they pay for capital improvement projects in the rears. And so what this essentially means is that they pay for them six to eight months after the close of fiscal year, after staff goes through a complex reconciliation of all the finances that were, all the expenditures that were accumulated for the year. And so what happens in the COJA currently, what it states is, is that if the county's collective operational charge exceeds the cost to provide service, including the capital improvements, then they get a credit. So if they overpay, they get a credit towards capital improvement projects. If they underpay, there is no methodology within the COJA agreement for the city to recoup that underpayment. So currently, the county owes us approximately $800,000, and what we refer to as a subsidy or an underpayment. And additionally, they are disputing their required participation in this particular capital improvement project. From the standpoint that they have made a statement that they essentially only want to pay for this particular capital improvement project if they obtain additional capacity from the repairs that would be needed. Well, that's not exactly how the COJA works. So in the COJA, there's essentially two schedules for calculating the payment of capital improvement projects. And this particular item is on, if it's a Schedule A item, they pay a lower percentage of the project. If it is a Schedule B item, they pay, or a new project, they pay their fair share portion of the project that is prorated on an equivalent dwelling unit basis. It's of staff's opinion that this particular project, as it is not covered on the Schedule A, there is no air diffuser system that is currently on Schedule A. Right now, there are only rotors. So on the Schedule A, the rotors that are currently on the schedule will be lined out, and this is a brand-new system that will come into play. And so it's of staff's opinion that they are required per contract to pay their fair share portion of the project based off of the prorating per EDU. What convolutes this just even a little bit more is because the county has still not paid us for the underpayment, staff has not been comfortable from a legal perspective putting forth the required rate study for the solid waste enterprise. So the last time solid waste rates were adopted by city councils in 2013, they went into effect January 1st of 2014, and it is way past due to adopt those rates. But one of the things that occurs when we have this hole or this subsidy that our rate pairs have been subsidizing county rate pairs is that we would not be in compliance with Proposition 218 if we took forward rates that were arbitrarily high, because our start beginning fund balance for the rate period was arbitrarily low because of that large subsidy that we're giving to the county. And so because of that particular issue that we feel that we've been subsidizing county and that they owe us this funding right now, as well as related to the fact that the county is paying for capital projects in the rears and not providing sufficient funding for cash flow or for payment of capital improvement projects, that we actually don't have enough money in Fund 721, which is the Wastewater Capital Replacement Fund. And so we're actually proposing that we will be paying for this project, a portion of it, out of wastewater non-operations. And so what that is are the wastewater development impact fees that are collected from developers as they build new homes for the purpose of expanding wastewater infrastructure, both collection infrastructure as well as the plant. So if you remember, when we go back to the original part of this presentation, I kept saying the plant's overcapacity from a loading perspective and needs to be expanded. One of the things that is upholding our ability to complete that expansion process is the lack of ability right now to do a bond issuance that's required for a financial perspective to fund the project. And the reason why the bond issuance is upheld is because the rates are upheld, because we are not able to adopt Prop 218 compliant rates with the subsidy continuing with the county. And so the way that this proposed project is funded and structured is a little bit convoluted. And so as you'll see, is the very first item that is proposed in the resolution to city council is to authorize an amendment to the annual budget for this current fiscal year, which is 2020, 2021, to increase the capital improvement project budget for CIP 459 by $4 million. So all that was previously budgeted was the design cost, and it was about, I'm going to say it was $380,000. So the first item that is before the city council is to amend the 2021 budget to include the required funding for the construction of the project. We cannot put the project out to bid until we have the construction dollars secured through the budget and appropriated by city council. And so this is where it gets a little convoluted. So what you see is, I am recommending from Fund 721, which is a wastewater capital replacement fund, that $987,000 from the unassigned fund balance of Fund 721 get allocated in the budget to the CIP 459. I am then further recommending that from Fund 725, unassigned fund balance, which are actually development impact fees, that approximately $3 million is then allocated to this particular project. There's a portion of the project that is related to PG&E's on-bill financing program. PG&E has an on-bill financing program by which agencies, primarily public entities, can borrow money from PG&E for energy efficiency projects. And the way that you pay the debt obligation back to PG&E is through the payment of your PG&E bill. So what they do is, so we borrow $1.5 million from them, and we pay PG&E back by paying a PG&E bill cost that is the same cost we were paying prior to the energy efficiency project. So the delta between the energy cost savings associated with the new project is what is used to service that debt obligation. So as soon as we complete the construction of the project and PG&E buys off on it and it's all hooked up, we will get $1.9 million back. So that first part of the $3 million back will come directly back to the Fund 725 in the form of the payment from PG&E associated with the on-bill financing loan. The second portion of the project is what we are referring to as what we feel is the county's contractual obligation to participate in this project, and it's about $1.1 million. And the reason why I put it against this particular fund is because we don't have enough money within our wastewater operations fund to continue to cash flow the entire operation, pay for operations, but I'm still paying this subsidized rate and also be able to cash flow everything that we need to. So I am also recommending that when Placer County eventually agrees to pay their fair share cost of the project, $1.1 million, that simply goes back into Fund 725, the PFE. The reason why this is important, that it's structured in this particular manner at this point, is because we don't have enough money due to the long-term subsidy associated with the county to pay for as we normally should be out of Fund 721. So without those issues getting addressed, we are essentially borrowing money from development impact fees, which is going to further complicate our efforts to meet the underwriting requirements to complete the bond issuance for the wastewater treatment and reclamation facility plant expansion project. So like I said, this gets a little bit convoluted. If everything was great and everyone was, you know, playing nicely in the sandbox, we wouldn't be structuring this agreement that way. We would be moving forward arm-in-arm and actually sharing in the cost of this project and both receiving the benefit of the $1.9 billion on-bill financing loan. But because we don't have enough money because we've been subsidizing them, we're unfortunately in the position of having to structure the deal this way, which means that in the long run, their rate pairs should not receive the benefit of the energy cost savings of the project that's associated with the PG&E on-bill financing program. Now, if they come along at some later date and decide to reconcile these issues and pay their $1.1 million directly to us, so we're not in the position of having to do this loan, then it would be only right for them to be able to share in the cost savings associated with the energy efficiency loan through the on-bill financing program. So the second item before you is approving the improvement plans and technical specifications, so we can put the project out to bid. Then we get back to being a little bit complicated again. It's also authorizing the public works department to sole source the equipment for these actual projects. So it's the diffused air system. And the reason why we are requesting to be able to sole source the equipment is because due to the long lead time associated with the equipment and the concerns about the rainy season coming, as well as the time that is required to publicly bid a project and go through the bonding process, we do feel it's important to sole source the procurement, I can't talk, procurement, purchasing of the source equipment for the project. So you will see a justification memorandum that is included in the documentation presented to the city council. We are requesting authorization of Task Order Amendment Number One with Stand Tech Consulting Services for additional support through this project. And then finally, authorizing staff to proceed with the bidding process for the construction of this project. So I know that was a handful, or mouthful, I should say, but if anybody has any questions or can provide any additional information, please let me know. I just really want to make sure the city council's understanding, and I'm making it very clear, the financing component of this particular proposal, because it is not very straightforward, and there are some implications to it. The fact that we are having to do a loan against the wastewater development impact fees is going to further complicate our ability to eventually bond and expand the wastewater plant. That if it's not done in short order, is actually going to result in a moratorium within the city of Lincoln. So I just wanted, you know, it's very important to me that I'm being clear. So if I'm not, please let me know, and I'll try to explain a little bit better. Thank you, Jen, and thank you, Paul, for pulling it, because I think we all had some questions to it. Did you get your question addressed, or do you continue to have one?
Well, I think it was addressed for all of us, but let me drill down on it very specifically. I was approached by a county supervisor who saw this on the agenda and wanted to make it very clear that the supervisors have not yet taken up nor approved paying their fair share cost of the oxidation ditch. So it sounds like this is going right along with the arrears that we are struggling to come to agreement with on the county, with the county. And I think one thing I do want to clarify, Jennifer, is you've used the word subsidized a great deal in this conversation, but I would add a little more to that word, which is unintentionally subsidized. This was not the original intent of our agreement, and there but for, as I understand it, the county's belief that they are not responsible for paying the overage, the difference, we wouldn't be in this situation in the first place from the bonding perspective, from this loan perspective, all of it. So hopefully, we can, we can come together with them and resolve all of this in one fell swoop and move forward as as partners in the best interest of both of our agencies. So I think you've got it cleared up for me. Thank you.
Do any of my colleagues have questions based on that report out? I did have one question that's more of a comment also and, and, you know, reviewing it in advance. And I want to make it clear, I think, to the public that this is not a mechanism that I think any of us have a desire to do tonight. I don't want to to vote for this. I don't want to vote to take from a fund that I think shouldn't be paying for it. But I want less for there to be open raw sewage running into the streets as a Christmas present for our residents, which am I mistaken in that that is what could be the result if council rejected this?
It wouldn't necessarily be in the streets. It would be into Auburn, or being.
Oh, even better. Ruin the repairing habitat while we're at it.
And it would carry with it significant fines and penalties.
Significant liabilities for the city as well, additional to the public health hazard that that would pose for, you know, all the communities. And so my follow-up question to that is, based on Paul's now feedback, I have an additional question. So if the feedback from the county was, hey, we haven't approved that funding, that to me begs the question of will they approve that funding? And if they don't approve that funding, what then? Will we have a recourse?
Yeah, so essentially, it's of our opinion that they would be in breach of the contract and we would take legal action to resolve that contract default.
Okay. Well, thank you for pulling, Paul. I think that this is a really important issue for all of the residents to be aware of because this is something that we've talked about publicly before. It's really important that we're able to meet the expectations and the capacities of our residents and to be able to continue to do so and to like have operations work as they need to. And it is frustrating to not be autonomously able to make those choices for our citizens. Can we open up to public comment now?
Yes, Mayor. I have one hand raised. Mr. Chapman, please go ahead.
Thank you, Gwen. Once again, Byron Chapman, Madam Mayor. In listening to the explanations, which I believe I do in fact address, one question is, how do we avoid this with the county in the future? I mean, how did this get so far down the road as to where we are now? Could this benefit caught sooner? Is this something that we have a timeline in place, whether it's a month, three months, a year, whatever that might be, in order to maybe stop this kind of a nosedive trying to get this to happen? And and also the houses that we have coming onboard with the city. I mean, we literally can make the comment, I think it's pretty close, is that we're, you know, they're coming out of the woodwork. So we have a lot of homes coming in. We have more homes slated. And I'm just wondering at this point, even why the city is even having any consideration in time spent on Village Five yet for the fact that litigation still is pending on that project. And most importantly, that's literally thousands of homes that would be added if, in fact, that goes through. So I think we need to think about that as well. And making the changes or the transfers from these different funds. You know, when California came in and did an audit on the city, one of the primary things was that, in fact, these moves and loans were done illegally. And I want to make sure that our ACEO can tell us for a fact that this is something that is legal other than that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. No other hands are raised.
All right, we'll bring it back. Thank you. And I did want to maybe follow up on that in that, two things, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Hanson. But my recollection is that for as long as I've been elected, we're going on, what, a little over two years, two and a half years now? You have been telling us that this is a problem and we have been trying to address it and fix it. It was tagged in the very beginning with all of the other slew of, you know, issues that were tagged. And we have systematically worked through a lot of them. And this one is one of the ones that remains and we've been working on and are continue to work on it to try to fix it. I can't speak for how we got here. I wasn't around then, but I know that as long as I've been around and almost everyone on this call and maybe Paul could chime in because he might have more context, but that's something we've been working on. Is that it correct?
That is correct. So the agreement was entered into before I started working with at the city. And, you know, unfortunately, and I believe Miss Molinkoff references, I don't believe that the original intent of the agreement was to result in the subsidy. And I do believe that the original intent was for the capital improvement projects to kind of be laid out the way they are, which I believe if we just implemented what the contract requires, we wouldn't be in this mess. So I think that's part of the biggest dispute we would desire for everybody just to follow the contract. And but, you know, the the second item is I do say that there is a solution to the operation charge underpayment that is actually provided for in the contract and that is followed, then we should be okay. And I do want to note, we do have a brief update regarding this, regarding the regional sewer at the end of the meeting. The reason why this particular, I wanted to go in depth on this particular item, if it was pulled, was simply to make sure that, you know, we are disclosing what what the financial situation is with this particular project. It's integral to the function of the plant, to meeting our permit requirements, to not discharging raw sewage. So, you know, we've put forth a solution that is viable. And from the most points, we'll be able to get the one point nine million dollars back from PG&E, right? You know, upon completion of construction. So that's not a concern. The concerning part would be the Placer County Fair Share of the project. I think that they do agree that they owe us some portion of the cost. I think what's at dispute is what portion of that cost? And so eventually, once that dispute gets resolved, then that fund will be made whole. My primary concern is we're just further delaying our ability to meet underwriting for a bond issuance, which is a problem when it comes to the wastewater treatment plant expansion.
Would you do me a favor and briefly address the comment by Mr. Chapman? Because I think it's one the public might have and there's common confusion on it versus inter-fund loans. What made the prior ones illegal? What we're doing now? What's legal? What's not? Because this is not illegal. This is just not what we want to do. This is nowhere near illegal. This isn't even, you know, it's not broaching the line. But could you just, a quick, you know, elevator pitch version so that people understand what what you mean when you say the financing that we're using?
Right. So an illegal inter-fund loan is essentially a transfer between funds that is not substantiated or not in line with the restrictions that are placed on any given fund. So as we know with the general fund, there are less restrictions placed on the general fund because it is, revenue is obtained from sales tax as well as property tax. With the special funds, they are more, they're considered enterprise funds. So when you look at the wastewater enterprise and you go to completing the underwriting or when you start looking at rate analysis, there is a portion of the plant expansion that will be the obligation of the current rate pairs. So when you look at Fund seven twenty, from an accounting perspective, you're actually looking at seven twenty, seven twenty-one and seven twenty-five in their entirety. They're all actually part of the mother fund, which is Fund seven twenty, which is not ideal for this situation is that that money was intended for the plant expansion. So because it is going to be intended to be a short-term loan that is needed for cash flow basis, and so it can be completed if we are consistent with being able to meet our stated requirements for getting it paid back. We need to get this item out to bid. And so what my recommendation would be based off of any conversations we have with the county coming up, that we actually adopt a formal inter-fund loan for when the funds are expended, just so that we can substantiate. Yes, on paper, we did this for this reason, and this is why. This unfortunately came a little bit at the last minute from the standpoint that we were really hoping that we wouldn't get to this point in the year with the county still not agreeing to pay the subsidy as well as pay the fair share of capital projects. Now, this is a big conversation that's going on for several years now. It's been a big point of frustration for myself, for Ms. Molinkoff, for Mr. Leffwitch, who was our former Public Works Director. And it needs to be resolved. So at some point, if this doesn't get resolved, it would be go into legal action and we would be essentially just booking these items as a liability to the county because we actually go ahead and invoice them for them. And that was part of, that will be part of my update later, is our strategy for, essentially, we are going to move forward with implementing the agreement as we feel is legal and was intended. And that means we will be billing them properly for the operation charges as well as for their fair share of the capital projects. Outside of that, there really isn't another solution. The city doesn't have a money tree. We have no other source of revenue for, to pay for things like that. So it really is time to just come together and work together and get these these big projects done. We wouldn't be putting this item forward if we weren't getting afraid of the rainy season. So unfortunately, we're a little bit subject to being concerned about the rain. Although it does appear that we're entering into a second year of drought, it does not mean that we won't have one or two rains that will hit that plant at its peak design capacity.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any further questions or are we ready to entertain a motion?
No questions.
You have a motion?
Yep. I move that we adopt Resolution two thousand and twenty-one dash ninety-six. Do we have to read all of it or are we good on that?
I'll leave that to Christine.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, do I have a second? I'm not sure who got that, but Gwen can.
That was Bill, yeah. Councilmember Adriana?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawrenceon?
Yes.
Councilmember Joyner?
Yes.
Councilmember Carl Skid?
Yes.
And Mayor Sohei?
Yes, thank you. All right, we'll move on to nine. We have no publicarians tonight, so we'll continue to ten, which is general business. We'll go with ten A, which is receiving our COVID nineteen report. And Ms. Hanson will provide an update on the status of COVID nineteen state of emergency in the city of Lincoln.
We don't have a whole lot to respond to. We did just get a little bit more information today regarding the Relief Act funding. I have not had the opportunity to review the information that our clerk sent this morning. But we are still looking towards planning with the community, the expenditure of those funds, as well as we do not have a great update about what this June fifteenth looks like. The governor is still on target for continuing to release many of the restrictions. As well, we do understand that there should be some type of changes to the Brown Act, but we're just not really receiving any good information at this point. So that was all I really had to report, except for some good news is through our fecal matter testing completed at the wastewater treatment reclamation facility, we're only seeing about one to, you know, it's in the non, almost in the non-detect level, around one case a day. So that is what we were seeing at the very, very, very lows during way low lockdowns. So I think that we're looking really good and I'm very excited for the local economy and everyone get back to their normal, normal business and normal lives. That's all I had.
All right, you guys know the drill. Since we're in a virtual setting, I'll go one by one, see if any of you have any questions for Ms. Hanson. And we'll give her a good last grilling before she moves along on her way, starting with Councilmember Adriana.
Thanks. Thank you for that update, Jennifer. I think this is an appropriate question for our topic. I was just wondering if there was any movement forward or update you could give on getting us back in person? And I know you guys had gone out for, you know, quotes on the new council chambers or any of that. Like what's, what's, I haven't heard anything lately. What's the update on that?
We have done made a whole lot of progress regarding solicitation of actual proposals to do the design work related to the council chambers, whether the council chambers got moved, moved down to the first floor or whether or not there's a remodel done up on the third floor. I think one of the things that will push everybody into a decision because we still have the concerns related to the audio feedback issues on the third floor is what does this June fifteenth look like? If the governor lifts the executive order that waives the in-person Brown Act requirements, then the most natural thing would be to just go back into person, which can be done by the next meeting. If that order is not waived and the council still desires to do a hybrid option, the staff does need to continue to do some additional work that unfortunately we have just not been able to get to. And that is soliciting proposals and design plans for council's consideration as to expanding either the third floor opportunities as far as the audio and visual equipment goes or actually making a new council chamber. So that would have to be put back on staff's plate.
Okay. And then are we getting to a place where we can lift our emergency order in Lincoln?
I would not recommend lifting the emergency order at any time soon only from the standpoint that it enables us to obtain any emergency-related funding through FEMA or through OES. You have to actually, we had to send it to them. So it's just basically kind of being greedy. I would take advantage of any free money you get that might come down the pipeline that requires that order. It's not providing any restrictions that are placed on anybody right now. It's not a health order. So, you know, we, we have nothing to do with the restrictions. Those are all based off of state orders. So my recommendation would be to not lift it until probably the state lifts their emergency order. At that point, I think that the OES and FEMA funding would have ran dry.
Okay, can I double down on that just for context, which I know I do every time that that question is asked? But so like Jen just said, that order allows us to draw down state and federal funding for our impacts and that are in alliance with a number of things in our hazard mitigation plan or any other thing, right? That has to do with the emergency order. There is a bunch of money in the state budget right now going towards expanding CDAA, which is the California Disaster Assistance Act. That is where we would pull funding down from. I would highly encourage us to keep our order in place because as Jen just said, there might be opportunities for us to be able to draw down additional funds to be fully compensated for whatever our impacts were. If we don't have an order in place, you are not eligible. And when she says, don't end it until the state of California ends theirs, I mean, it could be years before the state of California pulls their order for the same reasons, because they're trying to draw down funds from the feds. There aren't any constraints on our order right now. It's not asking people to do anything that the state is not asking people to do, but would be an important mechanism for us to get funding from. So I know that it seems weird to have it there, but it really is just kind of a statutory function. And then on the Brown Act part, I also just can give a little bit of context. At the state level, all of the state local government associations have submitted a letter to the governor asking for some flexibility should he decide on the fifteenth to end the the order because it would be, in terms of the Brown Act exemptions, it could be difficult to pivot on a dime unless the guidelines are such that, like Ms. Hanson said, we could just return to normal activities in person as before. But if there are extra restrictions still in place, but the virtual part is not in place, we could in particular find ourselves in a weird position where the public has very little access to our meetings just because of our chambers.
Yeah, well, we don't want that.
No, and it would be out of, I mean, we've tried to plan for it. The state's really not giving any indication of what they're going to do. So hopefully, if they do lift it, they just lift the restrictions that go with it and we can just move forward as we used to. But hard to say.
Well, I had heard somebody told me that somebody who would know told me that that the federal, the federal government is still, still giving money. Other jurisdictions had lifted their, their emergency order and the money's still coming, that they're not really looking at that. But if that's not actually the case.
No, you have to. You have to have it in place to file. I selected a different answer, but on the, the non, the non-entitlement funding that was released. And so I'm sure that we already have, I think we already have, this is a question for you, Jen. Do we already have a valid DANS, DANS number and our SAM registration from the CARES Act and other things, right? Because that's what we need to have in place to be able to like apply for it. So we are in a good position, correct? We should just be able to ask for it and it will be pretty seamless. We don't have to do anything else.
Correct. Yeah. So we already have, we receive other federal funds. So we have that portion already taken care of. I think Councilmember Andre, out of what you may be referring to related to the federal funding, is there's federal funding that comes directly from the feds and then there's federal funding that comes through the state. So the funding that we're speaking of, we actually had to apply through the state. And for emergency services or funding that's issued through Cow OES or from FEMA, you do need that emergency declaration for funding that was like just related to the CARES Act. And or if you're an entitlement city underneath the rescue plan, then you may not need it. But we're not an entitlement city. And so our funding goes through the state and then to the city. And so it's just a little bit of a nuanced difference.
Yeah, okay. I appreciate that information. Thank you.
Any other questions or shall we move along to public comment?
I've got a few. So I'll actually start at the bottom of the list. And I don't think there's any member of the council that would be willing to end the emergency declaration on the side of possible reimbursement or funding. uh, on the, the side of possible reimbursement or funding coming forward. But I'm wondering if we can bifurcate this, the portion that bothers me is the transfer of powers and authority to the city manager. We're a year into this. The emergency that required, uh, the city manager to have that additional authority to move swiftly to respond to COVID no longer exists. So, so I'm just curious if we can bifurcate this, leave the emergency declaration in place to be able to recover, uh, whatever funding may be coming forward or, or to receive whatever funding may be coming forward. But also to shift that, uh, power back to the council, which is ultimately where it belongs. And maybe that's a question for Christine. I don't know.
That is something we can definitely take a look at, um, that, that's not something that I've heard other cities doing, but we could certainly look into it and perhaps propose an amended order.
So I, I believe, and Gwen, correct me if I'm wrong. So we did complete, and I was just looking for it, we completed a review of any action that has been taken as you speak of or related to what you're talking about. And it's hasn't really, I think there's one purchase that occurred and was reported out on. And I don't think that the order provides the straight out powers that you refer to. It was more related to just purchasing. But, you know, staff's more than happy to take a look at it.
I'd appreciate that. So then to circle back around, as we were talking about the potential for the governor's order to possibly be rescinded or diminished on June fifteenth. To my reading, even if he does that, Cal OSHA is not moving towards changing their rules. Uh, so, so how do we, how do we deal with that conflict? Is that not right, Alyssa?
That's correct. Cal OSHA will, they will come out with their own rules. There is rulemaking going on right now. So there will be revised rules that come and regulations that come out from Cal OSHA that are supposed to, you know, align with these new lifting of restrictions. We just haven't seen them yet.
And aren't likely to until they give you them.
Okay. So we may have the, and I'm just going to use the term the political theater of the governor saying, we're done. But Cal OSHA leaving rules in place that continue the pretty much, uh, status quo.
Correct.
Great, okay. Well, I guess this is a little bit of good news that wasn't in, in your comments, Jennifer. But it's my understanding that Placer County has moved into the orange if we're still using the old coding system. So, uh, I'll leave it on that tiny bit of good news.
Uh, Councilwoman Crosskin, did you have any questions?
Nope.
Councilwoman Lauritsen?
No, but, uh, I just had a question about if we keep the emergency declaration in place, uh, can we still go to in-person, uh, council meetings?
As soon as we're allowed to.
Okay.
Definitely.
Right now, I, that, that allowed you comment. Right now, we're allowed to if we're able to have mitigation measures in place. Our council chambers are too small to have mitigation measures in place to also be able to allow access to the public to watch our meetings and have access to it. That's why we don't. Some do, but they have a better, you know, capacity or they have video capacity or they're able to do all things at once and we, we can't. Is that correctly stated? Good. Yeah. All right, let's go to the. Do we have any public comment?
No, no hands are raised, Mayor.
All right, then we will bring it back. There's nothing that is necessary for this, so we'll move on to ten B. And that is adopt resolution twenty twenty one dash ninety seven approving the annual budget and capital improvement plan for fiscal year twenty twenty one dash twenty two and adopting an appropriations limit for the city of Lincoln. And our finance director, Gary Lashmont, will be giving the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Did you want to see my face? Because right now they won't let me in.
You're fine if you're not able to.
Okay. It's a pleasure to talk about. Oh, they want me to start my video. Hold on. There we go.
There he is.
Going to talk about the twenty one twenty two operating capital budget and improvement, capital improvement budget tonight and, uh, hope we have a good discussion on where we're headed for next fiscal year. If you want to go to the next slide. Basically going to do a funds overview of the general fund, which is fund number one hundred, which covers the police and fire and most of the general services of the city. And then we have a new fund one oh one that we set up for the property tax sharing agreement that was signed, uh, earlier this fiscal year to, uh, improve public safety. Now we have the development services fund two forty eight. And then we have our public facility element funds, which are basically the impact fees we collect. Then we have our enterprise funds, which is our water, our sewer and our, uh, solid waste. And then we have capital improvement projects. So some of the challenges we're facing, uh, with the budget and most cities are probably facing the same things. We got increased lighting and landscaping deficit impact of the general fund. And we have, uh, no CalPERS rate increases this year, but just as a long-term statement for everybody to maybe ponder. I talked to a couple of people that last year, CalPERS discount rate on their pension fund was seven point zero and the actual earnings were four point seven percent. So they may be thinking about lowering that discount rate from seven to another number. And I did do a calculation with the software that we have from one vendor. And if the discount rate lowers by a quarter of a percent and by about year two thousand twenty four, the unfunded accrued liability to say that the city will owe to CalPERS will be an extra three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So you can see if it drops another half a quarter point to six and a half, then we do another seven hundred thousand dollars a year. So that's just something to think about long-term if CalPERS decides to change their discount rate on their pension earnings. We also have funding of our OPEB obligations. We talked about this before, but we had a OPEB actuary study done in September of last year. And the OPEB liability went from nineteen million dollars to thirty million dollars. And one of the things that did was increase the amount of money that we should fund into our OPEB trust, which was one of the items that was on the consent item to take seven hundred thousand dollars out of the OPEB reserve and put it in the OPEB trust this year. And this year's budget asked for another seven hundred thousand dollars out of the reserve to fund OPEB obligations. We have a couple of negative fund balances in the fire and the drainage funds two forty two and two forty seven. And there's always, uh, a prioritization has to take place to fund capital replacement projects. It looks like because of the fires last year and other things happening in the insurance world. It's a hard insurance market, which means basically insurance companies run the, the way they want to price. You can't really negotiate with them. Our liability insurance premium, I think, has gone up in the general fund a hundred thousand dollars. So our total proposed combined budget is a hundred and eight million dollars across fifty two funds, and that includes transfers between funds. And we anticipate, uh, our construction continue on a similar pace as this year for next year's budget. And we've tried to maintain minimal budget increases across the divisions. And we prioritize capital projects and move some of them into future years to preserve fund balance. We know the general. The general fund is our main operating funds. That's for public safety, recreation and library services. And we get about seventy five percent of our revenue from property taxes and sales taxes in that fund. So we don't have really any new sources of revenue. We're projecting our secured property taxes to increase by four percent. And sales tax to increase from four to five percent. And we'd had a discussion a couple of weeks ago in the workshop about changing our reserve policy. There was no final, no final determination on that, but we are increasing our operating reserve to twenty eight percent of operating expenses. And we hope that there's a rebound in some of the recreation programs and revenues due to COVID nineteen restrictions being lessened. And once again, to, I guess, try to maintain within the budget, uh, especially the L lad decreasing service levels for citywide parks. This is what we think is going to be happening at the beginning of July. The fund balance in the general fund will begin at about eight point zero million dollars. Twenty two point zero zero seven in revenue and outflows of about twenty four. In those outflows of revenues, there's seven hundred and four thousand dollars in funding fund two seventy for lighting and landscaping district deficit expense. We're transferring one point five million dollars to the operating reserve and transferring about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in property tax collected into fund one oh one for the property tax sharing agreement. The main sources in each one of these categories, property tax, secured property tax, supplemental property tax, homeowners property tax, property transfer tax. The other big thing in that property tax is the vehicle license fee. That's probably the secured property tax and vehicle license fee probably make up oh, eight, seven million dollars out of the twelve million dollars in property taxes. And you got sales tax and use taxes and we include the transit occupancy tax in that category. And then service charges, you've got PG&E charges, broadband fees, business licenses, admin fees and plan check fees. So that's kind of like the categories that the revenue falls in. So once again, we're projecting over the, these are projections over our projections for this year. That's here's property taxes. We have four percent. Sales taxes up five percent. Other revenue down fifty percent. The other revenue down fifty, fifteen percent. Mostly due to, we got six hundred and eight thousand dollars in care funding that falls into the other revenue category this year. We're not getting CARES funding this year. And by the way, this budget shows nothing about the American Recovery Act at this point, because we're not sure how much money we're going to get. And how it can all be allocated out. So that's not in this budget yet. This highlights the general fund sources of revenues. You can see twenty two million dollars in revenue, half of it's coming from property taxes and another four point seven from sales taxes. That's about seventy five percent, maybe a little bit less of our revenue. Once again, um, service charges, you see one point six million down from one point nine because we're not putting any mutual aid revenue for the fire department in there because we don't know what that's going to look like. Also, if you look at other revenues, going from twenty five million to, I mean, twenty five thousand to two hundred and twenty four thousand. Um, we've got donations to the police department of sixty five K. Got July fourth donations of sixty thousand dollars and then we have a memorandum of understanding with the Thunder Valley Casino for another seventy two K that, that's why those other revenues are a little bit higher than, uh, as projected for this year. We go to the next slide. This is just graphically showing you the funding sources that you can see that property taxes is a huge chunk, followed by the sales taxes. And then the licenses and permits. Next slide. I think this linear representation of revenues versus expenses for the general fund for fiscal year two thousand thirteen to two thousand twenty two projected. So you can see we're kind of just about even when you take out the transfers this year. Some of the expenditures that's going to happen in the general fund, we've got two seasonal library assistance for twelve bridges. Inclusion of one full-time fired battalion chief. And once again, we're increasing the operating reserve to twenty percent. We're making a seven hundred thousand dollar contribution from the OPEB reserve to the OPEB trust. When we do that, at the end of next year, the OPEB reserve will have about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in it left. And then we've got the increased lad deficit contribution. So I think the total contribution is seven oh four, seven hundred and four thousand, but the increase is three hundred and seventy five K from the previous year. Where's the next one? There's the general funding uses by type. As you can see, salary benefits take up quite a bit at fourteen million out of the twenty four million. Uses by type. Graphically showing, so you see the, uh, salaries and benefits down a little bit for this fiscal year, but still in the major portion of costs. And then the operation in Maine is slightly up over the previous year. And go to the next slide. Here's the, uh, general fund expenditures by department. As you can see, six point six million for police and five point nine million for fire. That's twelve million out of the eighteen million. So they take up about what sixty percent, sixty two percent of the budget. With recreation next at one point two six nine million. Next. Graphically, once again, here's the expenditures by department. You can see where the police and fire are the largest expenditures in the general fund. New positions, uh, coming out of other funds and looking for an HR analyst coming out of fund six hundred. HR manager has been reclassed to the HR director. Looking for an admin analyst in the solid waste fund. A building inspector and then a construction manager split between those four funds that are listed. Next slide. So we created fund one oh one to make sure we could track expenses on the new public safety tax sharing agreement, so. It's funded by the limited term property tax agreement that was signed, uh, somewhere, and I think a little bit last year. Includes hiring full-time police officers and two full-time dispatchers. And includes the purchase of three Dodge Charger patrol vehicles. It's money coming out of that fund. Next slide, and we're showing that the balance to begin will be one billion. The balance is zero, but we figure inflows will be one, almost one point six million dollars and outflows one point one with the balance ending next year of about four hundred and seventy three thousand dollars into the fund one oh one. But the next one. And development service fund, this is for, uh, new development. She will beginning balance of five point nine with three and a half million coming in. Three point one going out with a projected fund balance at the end of next year, next fiscal year, six point three eight million dollars. Here's a summary of our public facility element funds. The numbers you see revenues and expenses, those are net, so that's revenue minus expenses. So transportation, expect one point three million dollars with net revenue over expense. You can see the other ones, library, a little bit negative. And then we have our two negative PFE funds, the fire and the drainage fund. They're going to be negative for quite a while. Let's become up with some sort of other solution. We got our enterprise funds. Water, wastewater, solid waste, transit and airport fund. We go to the next slide. So enterprise funds, the sources of revenues are primarily user fees, so we try to cover the costs, including the cost of capital and replacement of things that need to be fixed in those funds. Uh, there's a rate study currently undertaken in the wastewater race, as Jennifer talked about earlier. And I believe the solid waste study was completed earlier and we're keeping the current rates until at least through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty two. After that, I, we may have to look at the updating the rate study if that's the, the race continues through then. Next one. So once again, the airport fund has been negative, uh, the solution is that I'm not sure, but uh, then we got the transit services. That's basically covered by a contract with Placer County. So the obligation for two thousand twenty one, twenty two is six hundred and ninety one thousand, which is fully funded through state and federal funds. So transit operations, beginning fund three eighteen K. Expect to get four hundred eighty one thousand in, spend seven eighty three, so the ending fund balance will be about seventeen thousand dollars. And once again, as the notes that's done there, fully funded by state and federal transportation funding and operated by Placer County Transit. The airport fund, at least it looks like we're showing inflows greater than outflows for next fiscal year. Whittles the balance down by what a hundred and forty thousand dollars out of the six million dollars. So it's always good to see progress, but it'd be nice to see that go lower. Next. So this graphical representation of revenues versus expenses for the airport fund from fiscal two thousand fifteen to projected budget of two thousand twenty two. And if we go to the next slide, this is the revenue by type. So it looks like we're projecting a little bit better on the fuel and oil sales, sales versus last year. So that's the, the difference. Most of our revenue versus expense comes in the, the fuel and the lease versus what the cost of running the airport. So we've got our water operations. Rejecting a July first balance of almost three million dollars, two point nine eight. Expect to get about fourteen million dollars in. Spend thirteen point seven and a projected ending balance of four point one million dollars. We kind of look at the detail, next slide. We got collections, utility charges. We've got the fourteen million dollars in revenue. Biggest expense is the purchasing of water of eight point seven million dollars. Or expenses of thirteen million, seven ninety four. Next one. So this is what we think is going to happen to wastewater operations, beginning balance of about three point five million. Collect about ten point one. Spend eleven point five almost and have an ending balance of two point one five nine. And we got the detail on the next page. You can see the charges for services for the county. Fiscal year two thousand nineteen twenty, the actuals were three million, three hundred thirty two thousand dollars. We projected one point four eight two this year and leaving at one and a half million dollars. This has to do, I think, with the county trying to collect money from the county to pay their fair share and dealing with CogJ, I believe. So that's why that's lower than two fiscal years before. Solid waste. Begin the year with four point zero million, collect seven point four million, spend seven point four. Ending balance is not changing too much. You know this on the slide, disposal and processing, the projected this year is two point zero nine four million. We're projecting three point zero one five next year. My understanding is tipping fees are expected to go up nine hundred thousand dollars.
Gary, sorry to interrupt you one minute. Jen Brown, is that shown on sharing your screen as a PowerPoint or is that shown as a PDF? Because it's really difficult to read.
They're doing the slides. I'm not sharing it.
Yeah, I was just wondering if they're showing a PDF or the actual PowerPoint.
It's a PowerPoint.
Oh, there you go. That's better. Oh, that came in the focus. It's like the eye doctor. Perfect. Thank you.
There you go. So you see disposal processing, three point zero million or last year two point zero. That's my understanding is result of higher tipping fees. Next slide. So this is our funding for CIPs and a bar graph. The total of all those bar graphs is fourteen point seven two million. As you can see, the majority of, of the money is six point three million dollars for street projects. Four point one for water projects. And one point eight million dollars for vehicles and equipment as far as capital projects go. We go on. This actually is a list of the projects that are in the CIP. So people are aware of what's happening. So out of fund two forty six, which is the park PFE. Four hundred twenty five thousand dollars from Bella Breeze Park Master Plan. And then other ongoing things that need no additional funding is the Aiken Park Project and Renford Circle Park for those dollar amounts totaling five point seven eight million dollars. Next slide. Then we got our street projects. The biggest one is the one is going to get underway pretty soon. Easy Joyner Parkway widening four point seven eight million dollars. With the next biggest project Ferrari Ranch Road, I guess that Union Pacific Railroad Crossing upgrade at four hundred and thirty five thousand. And then Lincoln Boulevard Phase Three Upgrade, upgrades along Lincoln Boulevard for five hundred eighty one thousand. So those projects total six point three nine nine million, as you can see in the little green box in the upper right. So those are some of the street projects that are CIPs. Next slide. Then we got water CIPs. Biggest one is the water distribution rehabilitation. Replacing, repairing pipelines, et cetera, fire hydrants for two point eight seven five million. Then we got another water distribution rehab CIP down at the bottom line there. The West Design for Pipelines Fire Hydrants, that's six hundred seventy five thousand. So those projects for water capital add up to four point one million dollars. Next. And we got the airport CIPs. We got reconstruction of the runway with the majority of the money of four hundred eighty six thousand dollars coming from a federal aviation grant. And then there's, I guess there's an oil water separator for ninety thousand dollars. So six hundred and sixty six thousand dollars were the projects at the airport for fiscal year two thousand twenty two. Next. These would be the public buildings CIPs. There's no, I don't see a really huge one in there. The biggest one looks like the police department eighty eight parking lot. With repair at the fire station thirty three and exterior waterproofing, the fire station thirty three. And it looks like the corporate yard walk path matting. I'm not quite sure what that is, but I guess that's the roof for safety purposes. So those projects were totaling about a little more than a half a million dollars.
Correct. The matting project is a safety matting that goes around the promoter of the roof so that when the roof drains clog and staff has to go up there for any other safety reason, they don't slip and fall off the side of the roof.
Okay. Thanks, Jennifer. Next slide. And we got vehicles and equipment. You can see the biggest one is two solid waste side loaders at seven hundred fifty thousand dollars coming out of the PFE solid waste fund. And a solid waste front loader for three hundred eighty five thousand coming out of this PFE solid waste fund. You can see the public safety tax sharing agreement actually shows four Dodge Charger Police Patrol Cars coming out of there. And I guess my slideshow three earlier. So I guess I needed to update my previous slide. So those look like the biggest items coming out of vehicles and equipment CIPs. Next slide. Once again, we're hopefully sometime pretty soon in the next three months, we start installing citywide financial software that we hope will help with the budding budgeting process and make us more efficient in producing reports also. So that's coming out of the technology fund. Next slide. And then these are future year projects that have been put on hold totaling sixty two million dollars. You can see Community Center Park at nine point nine, Jimenez Park Phase Three Soccer Fields one point nine. Fidgetment Road Repaving one point nine. So these are all, then a water project for rehabilitation of West eight point five million. So once again, it shows there's never enough money to go around to do all your projects in one year. Next slide. And these are some of the wastewater projects that have been put on hold. You can see the biggest one is the expansion of the, with the Muni bond that we're trying to get for twenty eight point eight million dollars. Next slide. And that's the end of the presentation.
Thank you, Gary. All right. Since we are in a virtual setting, you know, the drill, we'll do it again. We'll go through each one of us and we'll see if each of our colleagues has a question before we turn it over to the public and then we can have a discussion after that if we'd like. And starting with council member Andrea.
Thanks. I have one question at the moment. I'm, I'm sure I'll have more in a minute. For the, for the added battalion chief for fire. Is that an actual new position or is that just shifting like overtime payment into a, a, a position? It's not really funding a new position or is it?
Correct. So currently, the battalion chief is funded out of the general fund, fund one hundred, and we're just proposing to make it a permanent position. So it's not necessarily new in the sense that it's a new position for the purposes as it relates to the tax sharing agreement. That's why it's funded out of fund one hundred.
Okay. So it's not adding another body. It's just making it. You're just funding it through that.
Yeah. So with the proposed safer grant that we submitted to the state, we requested for eighteen additional firefighters, which would bring us up to minimum safety standards. National safety standards, if it was, were to be approved.
So do you have any idea when we might hear about that safer grant?
I don't know. I was thinking that we would probably hear by now, but given with COVID and our experience with every other state and federal agency, I'm not surprised. It's a little bit late. I would guess hopefully by, you know, July, August timeframe, but I'm totally speculating.
Okay. Well, then since we're talking about the safer grant, my next question would be, which I really hope we get it. From what I understand, the application process was done a little different this time and we have a better shot at it. So I'm really hoping we get it. But my question is, what happens if we don't? We're, we, we need to talk about, you know, the staffing levels. What happens if we don't get it? I mean,
Yeah. Can we? Well, essentially what, 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 how I see this play out, if for some reason we don't get the safer grant or we don't get full funding of the safer grant. The council would have a couple of options. One of the one of my concerns is how the payments of the tax sharing end up actually paying out. And so currently, the first payment of the tax sharing agreement was in the rears, which meant that we actually received payments going back to July first. So we're a little bit hedging our bets right now regarding funding underneath the tax sharing agreement. But the reason why I was comfortable with that is we were fairly conservative with our expenditures with both the sales tax as well as regular property tax revenues. And we're in the process of renegotiating the property tax agreements for Village One that is pulling building permits, which is not subject to the tax sharing agreement. So I do think that there would, there is most likely going to be some option come mid-year to be able to amend the budget to start figuring out how to staff up fire, especially once we get a better handle on what those costs are going to be. What my recommendation would be based off of the safer grant results. If you don't get the safer grant results, I would do a, I would do some for the next two years, some draw out the revenues and I would use the unassigned fund balance and one-time funds to pre-fund them. And kind of cover that gap until such time the tax sharing agreement built our base up high enough. You have enough money to do that, but you're just going to want to be very careful with doing that with your financial projections. So with fire, because we have the shift work, you know, you can't just pull on one firefighter at a time. It doesn't quite work that way. So I would recommend that if we are going to have to pull on, on an incremental basis, after we receive word about the safer grant, that you took, look at some rejections for the general fund for property tax as well, sales, sales tax. And figure out how much can you hedge your existing one-time money for how many years before you're confident you can pay for it? And I have a feeling you'd only have to hedge it for probably maybe a year, eighteen months. And it's a little bit risky, but it is a method to staff them up.
Okay, thanks. Because, um, because here's the thing, um, I'm, I'm completely on board with the funding that's proposed for police. Like I, I, we are, we're at a level on both ends where we have to do something. So I'm, I'm not, I'm not against that at all. Like I'm totally for it. But I also, you know, in our conversation here as a council and staff, I, I just want to say that I'm hoping we get the safer grant, but if we don't and if we're going to be voting on this budget, I would really like some, some assurances that we're not just kicking the can down the road. Like if we don't get it, then we need to come back right away and we, and we need to talk about it. I'm, I'm on just a little, I'm a little nervous about about our fire staffing right now.
And I don't disagree. I think that it's, you know, they're, they're severely understaffed as well. There's no if, ands or buts about it. One, one of the challenges that we are facing right now is we have the safer grant opportunity. And unfortunately, PD, the felony arrests raised over forty percent year over year, and we're seeing some not good arrests go on right now. So when there is a felony arrest, it's not just the response time. It's associated with the actual incident itself. When they get dispatched is also the follow-up time for court and paperwork and all these things. Not only that, but it's starting to put our officers at risk. They're starting to pull more weapons out of cars and it's just getting to a point where it's pretty scary when you only have two officers on duty with the calls that we're having to go to right now. For example, Lieutenant Owls, who is going to be Chief Owls very soon. Was just sharing with me that they actually had to not do a pursuit because you need two officers to do pursuit. There was only one officer that was available to respond. So we're, we're getting to a point where we're not as able to respond to all the calls we should, especially property crimes. But we're also getting to a point where the nature of the calls that are coming in are getting extremely dangerous for our staff. With that said, I totally understand the concern related to fire. We all share that concern. There's a commitment with city council. We've heard the direction loud and clear and on staff to get them staffed up as well. Their staffing levels are also ridiculous. I would highly recommend that I, I wouldn't recommend that we say yes, no matter what, we're going to pull the trigger on three, you know, fire personnel. There is some financial analysis that needs to be completed. I would recommend that, you know, if a, that a conversation certainly warranted, once the safer results are heard back. And that there is a hard look done at financial projections because I do believe that there's enough one-time money that you could, without taking too much risk, leverage that money or I would refer to hedge it over the time period until we get the base built up from the increment. That would be my recommendation.
Okay. Do you have further questions, Holly?
Um, no, not anything different. I, I just, I fully understand the situation that, that the police are in and we all understand that. And it's, you know, it's we, we want our officers to be safe and have enough coverage out there. But again, I'm just going to repeat myself that, you know, we had a call the other day where every single firefighter was at one call. And it leaves the rest of the town vulnerable. And, you know, I get we have mutual aid, but you know, that's, we don't, we don't want to have to rely on that all the time. And, uh, and the other, the other issue that I have is there's this, there's this perception, right? And I don't, I don't know all the ins and outs of it because we don't get involved with their negotiations until it comes before us. But it, it was thought that the request was for three firefighters right now. And then all of a sudden that goes away. And there wasn't a lot of communication. And so now it looks like, well, we've scrapped the firefighters and we're just going to fund police, which again, I'm not, I'm for police hundred percent. But I'm really concerned about, you know, the, what that looks like and leaving our, our, our fire department with less than what they need. And so I know we're waiting for the safer ground. And again, like prayers that we get it. But I, I really feel like for myself, I need some, some assurances that this council is willing to like come right back if we don't get that. And, and so that the fire department knows that we're not just kicking the can down the road and go, oh, well, if we don't get it, then we'll come back and maybe talk about it. Like, I don't want to do that. I don't want to leave this conversation tonight. And let it be just like that. If I make it myself clear, I don't know, maybe I'm rambling, but that's, that's kind of how I'm in. So I'm gonna stop talking right now and let everybody answer their questions and then we can come back to.
Yeah, let's get through everyone's questions and we'll go out for public comment and then we can bring it back up for discussion if that works for everyone. And that way we have the whole, the whole picture to, to debate. And let's move along to Councilor Joyner.
Thank you, Mayor. So Jennifer, it sounds like I had a, based on your response to Councilmember Andrea, it sounds like I had a misunderstanding. We have been funding a third battalion chief with overtime monies. And I thought that this budget was going to actually create or fill that structural full-time battalion chief. Rather than simply fund what we've been doing differently.
So right now we don't have a third actual battalion chief. What we have is a captain that acts as an acting battalion.
I understand that. But prior to this, prior to this, we did have three.
No, no, we have not had three battalion chiefs. The only time that we had three battalion chiefs is when we had the shared services agreement with Rockland.
Which means we had three, but okay, so, so that, that clears that up for me.
But this, that makes me more confused now. So do we or don't we? What are we doing?
You have two approved battalion chiefs. The new battalion chief will be a new full-time battalion chief that will meet all the actual requirements of a battalion chief to serve as one. Right now you just have or this, you have regular staff acting as battalion chief.
Yeah. So my question is, are you saying right now we have two and we'll still have two? One is just going to be official or will we have two plus one who's now three?
You'll have the third battalion chief. So you'll have one more staff member. It's a whole new staff member.
That was what I thought. And then now I got confused.
Now I'm following. Yeah.
That's my question. That's what I thought as well. And, and
So what we thought is correct, right, Paul?
Correct.
Will be three, one is a new one, new staff person. Yes.
Yeah. So if you look at it in the sense, what we're essentially recommending is that there are four. Yeah, so if you look at it in a sense, what we're essentially recommending is that there are four. Police officers that are being recommended for police. There are two dispatchers that are, serve both departments, both police and fire. And there's one new battalion chief that will serve fire. The battalion chief position is only a position besides a fire, besides a. Actual fire chief that you can bring on, on a one-off. The others you cannot bring on, on one-offs. You have to do them essentially in groups of three or more.
Right, I just needed that clarification. I thought. What I heard in your response to council member Andrea suggested to me, or maybe it was just my hearing, that it was simply a, a. Shuffling of, of dollars and, and a continuation of um, the acting battalion chief. So I'm glad to hear that's not.
Yeah, no, and I apologize for that. That was my misunderstanding, I think, of what I was being asked. And, you know, when we, when we went through this process, it was, it was really difficult to figure out how to do this and what to propose. And it really came down to the safety concerns and the nature of the calls that are happening in PD. And the increase in felonies, um, that starts to pose a real problem. Now fighters' calls are increasing, but not to the level of requiring more and more and more incidents. Not that they don't have a safety issue. They absolutely one per, one hundred percent have a safety issue. And just in this particular situation, unfortunately, you, we could only fund one or the other. And since you have to fund three firefighters at one time, it does it, we can't fund one. That's how the decision got made and we're banking on the safer grant. There, unfortunately, there's not a real good solution to the predicament we're in. The good news is we're actually staffing up for once.
So talk to us and to the public for a moment about the safer grant and what that would do for fire if it comes through.
So we, the safer grant, you are more competitive if you are requesting that once you receive the safer grant. That you will achieve national fire standard levels. And so what we essentially requested was for eighteen additional firefighters. Now, there is going to have to be some analysis completed as to whether we could, if we get it, if we can accept the eighteen firefighters. Because there are costs associated with the firefighters regardless of, you know, how, that are scalable, depending on how many you have. And so the safer grant will provide funding and for a three-year period. Technically, typically, there's a local match that's required um for safer grant funding. But right now, that local match is waived. So, you know, are we going to build staff up with eighteen firefighters? Right when, if we get the saver rat, you know, I, somebody needs to run through this calculation, so fortunately, I'm not gonna be here to do that. Um, but there will be some level of increase. Even nine additional firefighters would get us into a much better situation. At least we're getting finally that third on the truck and that's what we need. You know, we need more boots on the ground. They need three responding to calls.
On that, Paul, can I do a follow-up question? So what happened in year, year four?
So what would happen in year four? So the city would either be put into the position of having to essentially lay them off. And is Doug or Matt Owls on the line? I believe there's also a situation in which you could provide for a second round of safer grant funding, but I'll have to refer to Doug or Matt Owls. Chiefly to answer that question. And, or, you know, we, we are doing a little bit of hedging, like I keep saying. And that we have a lot of things in the cooker that are going to be able to allow us even within a three, four, five, eight-year time period to afford a lot more. We have CFD two thousand and eighteen dash two, um, that is intended to cover those public safety gaps. And we're finally getting building permits in those annexed areas, pulling those permits. We made a commitment through the property tax sharing agreement to go out for a sales tax vote um years, I believe it was year eight. And as well as, as tax sharing goes on, we should continue to see our base growing from that increment portion of the tax sharing. So what I would recommend is this all gets kind of laid out in a plan with financial projections is what needs to be completed. But Doug, can you please provide more information regarding the safer grant?
Yes, you can. So there are agencies in the region that have successfully applied or been awarded um multiple safer grants. Because you've been successful once doesn't mean you're ineligible to apply again, but it would be a separate grant. It's not like you're applying for an extension right to start right when your, your current one ends. It would be a separate application. Um, so yeah, the option is you're, you're on the hook for the, the um funding of those positions at the end of the grant. Uh, if you're not successful in uh receiving a second one. Many people who apply for positions at the city, they would know from the get-go. They're applying for a grant-funded position. And so they, uh, they know that that could be temporary, and so the hope is that the city can get the, the finances in a stable situation. To afford to continue their employment once the grant is um terminated.
But ideally, what we would be looking to is getting two rounds of the safer grant, which will allow our CFD to build up. Allow our tax, property sales, our property tax base to build up, allow our sales tax base to build up and give us time to go out for that sales tax measure. And that'd be ideal, then it'd be seamless.
Yeah. Sorry to hijack your questions, Paul. Did you have more?
No, it's all right. It's appropriate. Um, so the next one is, is a lot lighter and it's really um. Meant to, to bring some clarity for the public. Um, Gary, you talked about not putting in. Uh, mutual aid numbers for fire. Maybe you can talk about why, why that is.
No, we, we didn't put it in because I think last year was three hundred thousand dollars and it's unpredictable. So if there's no mutual aid. It's uh, it's not something you really can easily forecast. I guess that's the answer.
We recover that after the fact and we can't know what those numbers are?
Correct. So yeah, with mutual aid, with the strike team reimbursements occurs after the fact. So it's typically a mid-year budget adjustment and it's really dependent on the particular fire season. It's likely that we'll have a pretty heavy fire season once again this year, uh, just simply related to hint going into the second year of drought. And there was one more nuanced thing I did want to say before I forget. The other thing that's really impacting the general fund is the lighting and landscaping district. That right there, that's going to be about a million bucks. So if we can get that assessment increase completed, that needs to be, that's another million dollars. That goes to solving this problem. I know that everybody's really frustrated and I share your frustration. We're gonna get there and we're gonna get there in the shorter term. It's not gonna be twenty years. It's gonna be probably five years. You're gonna get there. It just takes a little bit of finagling with the money we have and the money we don't have.
I would just like to remind us that we are to a place where we can say we're gonna get there. Cuz six months ago, we were still trying to find a way to get there. So. Um, any further questions, Paul, before I move on?
Uh, no more questions. Just, just a, a comment that I've, I've made uh from time to time. It's, and everybody knows this, a, a budget is really just a, a spending plan. And um, we are very likely gonna, I think, be coming back in the fall and making some adjustments, certainly within the next six months. And uh, taking a look at, at uh, real numbers and making adjustments accordingly. So um, this is by no means locked in, permanent uh, without the ability to adjust. That's it.
All right, uh, Councilor Crosskin.
The discussion of uh lighting and landscaping districts. The cost reductions that we're doing. And did you just cut? Or is there a plan that says we're going to cut water usage by seventy percent? And we're gonna cut landscape maintenance uh by a certain percent? Or is it not to that level yet and budget time and you just say we're gonna cut the budget by this much?
So the budget, the cuts associated with the lighting and landscaping district. That were intended to provide relief to the general fund associated with the zones that are deficit zones as well as the general benefit. Were made this current fiscal year. And so you, you're already seeing those cuts. Um, a couple of things we've had to adjust because we, we cut a little too much. But you, we're starting to get more and more and more complaints about the lack of landscape maintenance at parks, reduction in water costs. Um, a lot of the reduction was attained through the reduction in the professional services contracts. For the parks, landscape strips as well as the open space. But that is an issue that is going, is coming to roost very, very quickly. It's not sustainable. It's going to continue to negatively and even more so impact the general fund than it already is. The only way to fix that issue is to go out to the voters for an assessment increase. And so that, that has to be bitten off. You know, we went out to polling the last time. It did not appear to be favorable. My recommendation is that that gets pushed on full force. Because it will specifically, uh, very quickly improve public resources or revenue available for public safety. Because it's going to be hitting the general fund all over a million dollars. And it's only going to get worse, right? So one of the things that the council recall is that we use the unassigned fund balance of fund two seventy. And we distribute it proportionally amongst all of the lighting and landscaping district zones. There's thirty-two zones. When we first started out, there was five zones that were deficit. Now I believe there's nine zones in deficit. And in each year, there's going to be more and more zones that are deficit. All of that deficit funding has to come out of the general fund. There is no other funding source for it. So that issue is going to continue to compound on itself as well as impact the city's ability to improve public safety service levels. I would encourage the city council as well as staff to make that a top priority for this next fiscal year.
Jennifer, how much can we, how much services can we cut for, for lighting and landscaping? I mean, I mean.
You're gonna eventually have to close parks or, and or kind of, you know, stop maintaining streetscape and or turn off streetlights. But that's what it comes to. If, if the residents won't vote for an assessment increase unless the council's willing. To continue to take the money out of the general fund, eventually that is what you would end up doing. You would not just cut services. You would close facilities. Which is terrible.
Well, yeah, but, sorry, go ahead. No, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, to me, all I'm hearing is this cyclical, um. If we're not able to cut, you know, lighting and landscape, what's gonna continue or fix it, it's gonna continue to be uh one of the reasons. We're not able to adequately fund our public safety. However, as we let parks go dry in a drought and fire season, we are now more vulnerable. Should a fire come through and if we have to turn off streetlights, that makes, there's like, you know, that broken window theory where, you know. Just makes it more attractive to crime. So now we've increased the burden on our fire department. We've increased the burden on our first, you know, our law enforcement officers. Like it, it's just this downward spiral. I'm, I, as I hear you talk, I'm just like.
I know.
Circles and it just, it has to get fixed. Sorry, that wasn't a helpful comment, but it's just, I, I'm like tucking this little, like chasing my own tail spin now.
Yeah, you, you're correct, Mayor. I mean, there is no good thing that will occur from closing facilities down. And letting it go down, you know, down in flames.
Reducting in property tax, which now is less money to hire the very people that we need to attract, because people move for nice parks. I'm one of them. I wanted to live near. Several, so I, my kids don't jump off my own walls.
The real solution is that there needs to be a lot of effort put into educating the residents. Regarding the financial challenges of the lighting and landscaping district. That what's ultimately causing the challenges of light, there's two things that are causing the challenges. First, that the district was formed prior to the adoption of Proposition two eighteen. So the original lighting landscaping group zone, which is referred to as the original zone, it has like forty-five hundred homes in it. Their costs that they provide for the services they receive is at the same rate it was when they first annexed in. Because there was no escalation rate included in the formation documents, ever since Prop two eighteen hit, we cannot escalate their rate. So they're not collecting enough revenue to pay for the services that are related to their special benefits within the district. For streetlights, traffic signals, a- a- all of those things. The second thing that has happened is that when most of the lighting landscaping district zones were annexed into the district. It was not contemplated at that time for those zones to pay for their municipal water use. Now, if you recall, the city start paying for municipal water use in fiscal year seventeen eighteen, and that's just blowing up the finances of the lighting and landscaping district. The only way out of this issue is to get the voters to vote for an assessment increase. Or to get them to vote in a community facilities district that lays over the whole city that addresses this revenue gap. At some point, we are going to run out of this Band-Aid approach and that some point's gonna be within the next year or two.
And can I, can I be clear and hopefully I'm, I am clear and, and I'm not confused. But um, when you say an assessment, what we're really asking people is to pay their fair share. Because other residents in the city are, and so it's these homes that are locked into a rate. And fair share might not be the right term, because at the time it was, but it didn't have an escalator and it, and it predates current law. And so now it's the rest of the city who is paying more, basically subsidizing certain pockets in the city. Because, right, correct?
Correct.
There's general fund, right? So we're, we're having to use general fund dollars of general benefit to the entire city to subsidize these specific neighborhoods. Because their households don't pay towards the cost of maintenance.
There's two nuances. So there's, there's one set of the population, but they don't pay enough because their, their required annual assessment cannot be escalated. There's a second set of the population that doesn't pay at all. They're not in the lighting and landscaping district at all. And that is also a huge issue. So there's two solutions for resolving this. One is to go and ask the current parcels that are in the lighting and landscaping district to vote to increase their assessment. That requires a majority vote, but your vote is weighted by how much your assessment is in comparison to your neighbors. So if I paid a dollar and the mayor paid two dollars, her vote is worth twice as much as mine. Only takes fifty-one percent to pass. The other option, which would be better from a financial perspective, but might be a heavier lift, is to. Put out to all voters to do a community facilities district overlay, which is a different taxing mechanism. That's still completed on an annual assessment um through your tax rolls essentially. But the, the difference is, is that it would hit all parcels. You could still have zones. So people who are already paying would not, you know, if I'm paying eight dollars and my assessment's only ten, I'd only have a two-dollar CFD. Versus the parcel that's not paying at all, they'd have the ten-dollar CFD charge. But what that does is that also picks up not just the people who are paying not enough. But also picks up the people that are not paying at all, and it would equalize it across the whole city. The challenge with that methodology is that takes two-thirds of voter to approve it. So, you know, it's one of those things that needs to be, go back out to polling and then we need to start some serious um education. With the residents so that they understand the nuances of how this all works, cuz it can be just a little bit messy from a financial.
And that was gonna be my question. If there was a CFD, there would be parity in it. It's not like I'm gonna be voting to even pay extra, extra more. While somebody else pays less still. It would be across the board equal.
You can set up however you want. That would be my recommendation, because you could kind of look at the system and you could see where the votes are to say, okay, you guys are paying. You know, whatever, eight hundred dollars a year and your assessment would actually go down to seven fifty, so they'd be more likely to vote into it. You could equalize it more. So you can do it on that zone-by-zone basis.
Could create a parity in it and actually bring it down at a more reasonable level for some and bring it up to a reasonable level for others. All right, sorry to hijack you, Dan. Go ahead. It's still your turn.
Then. I guess the other question, I wanna go back to fire for a second. The safer grant that we requested is essentially to go to. Uh, three men on a truck, three people on a truck uh to get us the national average. If we don't get the safer grant. And that's that, by the way, is a minimum. I think I came up with eleven people, somewhere between eleven and fifteen firefighters. I. We, we can't, it, when we re-look at the budget. In four months or six months, as Paul suggested, we're probably gonna have to. There is no way we're gonna find the funds this year or next year. Including the tax sharing agreement to fund that level of fire service. So it has to be something smaller than that, which I'm afraid. That Holly is gonna be considered kicking it down the road. I just wanna call that out now. That the safer grant is uh essentially an instantaneous three-year fix for the problem. And that's the only way we can achieve that fix to the problem instantaneously. That it, it's something, when we decide. How we're gonna uh, what we're gonna do for fire, it has to be something, you know, short of that. Maybe it's add three firemen.
Oh, well, I, I would be okay with three is better than nothing. Oh, well, I, I would be okay with three is better than nothing. Three, I agree. Yeah, I know we couldn't fund eighteen, but three is better than nothing, so.
I'm, I, I think that. That'll be an interesting discussion because I'm not sure. The three. People have an impact. Uh. Except maybe covering for. Uh, uh, sick or, you know, overtime.
It, it depends on how, how it would play out. There's a couple of different options, right? You, and, and this is where you would really pull in. And the battalion chiefs and look at the stats. You would either fund, you know, add a third to the fire stations. Or you would add a third to a shift. I think what you're referencing is whether or not that third person becomes the approved minimum staffing or not. If it's an approved minimum staffing, and that's, you know, part of the agreement, then you, yeah, you would still have the same overtime. If it wasn't, then you would essentially use that third um to fill the overtime cost. So. It needs to be looked at. I think there's a lot of different ways to do it, but you know, we have some folks that are really knowledgeable regarding the stats regarding the type of calls. I think they can come up with a plan.
I, yeah, I was. Not suggesting that I could come up with a plan. But, uh. Because it is a complex problem. I just didn't want to leave this meeting. With the idea that if this. If we don't get the safer grant. That we can fix that problem some other way. And that's why I wanted to. Be clear about. So. That's all comments and questions that I have.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Lortzen?
Yeah, I want to thank, uh, Gary and Jennifer. I, I know. Budgeting is complicated when you're considering funds and moving money back and forth, and you got legal restrictions on some and not others. But I just want to make one point, you know, I am interested in, you know, funding some more firemen. Hopefully we can get the grant. Uh, and if not, hopefully we could find another way to do it. That's just, you know, that's it.
All right. I, I think that I interjected on all of your questions, and so most of mine have now been addressed. So apologies to all of you, but thank you for your. Consideration in that a lot of you had questions that were similar to mine. I do have some, I think, discussions items, but I'd like to hear from the public before we do that. Don't have any other detailed questions. So let's open it up for public comment.
Yes, Mayor, we do have a hand raised. Jeff Short, please go ahead.
Mr. Short, you are muted.
I apologize. I did not mean to raise my hand.
Oh, thank you. Okay, Mr. Garabedian, please go ahead.
Good evening, city council members. Mike Garabedian. I was at a city council meeting, oh, perhaps a year or so ago, and raised the question of the inadequate fire service. It, it's, I guess, but first of all, it seems to me there's no doubt that the city is in a condition of severe crisis. When it comes to its. Uh. Safety culture for fire. I may have mentioned at the time, I was a volunteer fireman in the rural fire district in upstate New York, and. It is inconceivable that a fire engine with. Two firefighters on it can do anything when they arrive at an active fire ground. And of course, the answer was someone said that we have mutual aid. Well. That, that doesn't solve the crisis. It's a. It's a severe crisis, and i- if it can be called anything else, I can't imagine what it is. And it seems to me it needs immediate solution, and it's not possible to solve it immediately. Are we doing everything we possibly can? And if so, we're, we're still in a crisis. I guess that's my observation and comment. There's just no way around it. And I'm not talking about police services. In this comment about the fire problem. If anything, we need more information about what actually happens at a fire. And how quickly mutual aid gets here. And how dangerous is to life and property? I guess that's my observation. It's kind of a question, but. I frankly don't know what to suggest. Is it possible just to call a spade a spade and say that we are in a unsafe condition? That, there you have it.
Thank you. Next, we have Byron. Please go ahead.
Once again, Byron Chapman. Mayor, as well as the council members and city staff. It's a subject that I brought up many, many times in the city. That dealing with the, the city's continued role of improving. The access for the disabled members in our community and those that come and visit. Four years ago, this last January, a previous sitting mayor and council member Gilbert. Had stated in a January two thousand seventeen meeting that there were two phases to the ballpark. One was the phase which the city at that time had approved a little over a million seventy dollars. To take care of things at the park. And then that was finishing phase one, which took quite a while, and then we were moving into phase two. There have been very small increment moves in the area of the ADA accessibility. For those that are not aware, the city of Lincoln and those that were. Pulling the strings and making the decisions got into this issue twenty years late. And then it was even a push after that. Want to make sure that we don't backslide. Uh, I have been out to the park. It's a wonderful place. Since that two thousand seventeen. The ballpark has put in new netty. Has put in a new shade facility out there, which is terrific, a new press box. But if you, you have mobility issues, don't even think about going to the park and sitting in the center of leisure, leisure of the VIPs. Can't do it. Doesn't work. My point is, is that if you tell everyone that they can't sit there, whether they can walk or not. Uh, I think what you're gonna find is people will go. Do, well, it's kind of a harsh tack. No, it isn't. The, the disabled community in, in throughout the nation, pretty much here in Lincoln as well, is that. It's taking a backseat. It's a civil rights violation, and I think the city needs to take better opportunities to make this happen. Uh, and not just taking a backseat to everything else as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Richard Pearl.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. First, a question for Gary. First, thank you very much for a very detailed presentation. A couple of questions. One, in the city manager's budget message, there's a reference to the American Rescue Act Plan and nine million dollars. Uh, my understanding is that that's a probably a two-part allocation, fifty percent this year and fifty percent next year. But the question is, what can we possibly use that for? And how are we positioning ourselves to avail ourselves of that, of that amount of money? Because we're, you know, that's, that's a lot of money to deal with. And then, secondly, in two thousand nineteen, the city council had a presentation by a, by. Uh, an acting finance director, talking about bond proceeds. And the discussion was that it's under litigation. The lawyers are looking at it. I understand that we changed lawyers. But we're talking, what, twelve, fifteen million dollars of potential use of money? So what's the status of that, please?
The nine million dollars is an estimate right now. We're waiting, waiting for final numbers on the American Plan Rescue Act. And yes, it will be done in two, two tranches, they say, but it comes from the state because we're a non-entitlement entity. And we're still waiting. The Treasury guidance has just come out recently, so everybody that I know is still reading the Treasury guidance to figure out exactly. What you can spend the money on. It's, it's all COVID-related and they're trying to help. Uh, underserved communities that were affected by the COVID nineteen first, and then allocate money out. So. People are still reading the guidance from the Treasury. In fact, some more guidance came out today that people are still trying to read. As far as the bond proceeds, I'm not quite familiar with that one, Richard.
I, I am, but I, I think that.
I'm sorry to jump in. I was gonna say, can we save answers until we've heard from all of the public? That way we can go through and staff can answer all at one time, and while I'm taking notes, and I bet that Jen and you are also. Does that, does that work?
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Is there anyone else going?
No, Mayor, no other hands are raised.
Oh, all right. Well, in that case, that comment was almost unnecessary, and we'll kick it back to Ms. Hanson to talk to the bond that I think.
I, I do, Mayor. I did just see two hands pop in at the last minute, right when we turned it over. You might want to take.
Okay, yeah, if there are more, I'd love to take them, especially on something like the budget, so.
Okay, so phone number ending in zero eight one one. Please go ahead. You need to unmute yourself, please. There you go.
Yeah, hi, my name is Evan Fattis, and I am a fire captain with the Lincoln Fire Department, and I'm also the union representative for the Lincoln firefighters. Me and my family also reside in Lincoln. Since January, I have met with Chief Lee on a monthly basis. In February, we discussed the tax sharing agreement with Placerville County. We've been told public safety chief, where we've been told by public safety chief Doug Lee since February. That two dispatchers, one police officer, and three firefighters will be the hiring priorities as the city assesses the incoming tax sharing revenue. We were told this up until Wednesday, May nineteenth, during our last meeting with the chief. Suddenly, our positions were scratched from the budget without warning. Our current da- daily staffing is six firefighters and one battalion chief. For a city of our size, approximately fifty thousand residents, based on point six-six firefighters per one thousand. That was recently adopted by the city council as the minimum staffing level needed for the city of Lincoln, we should be at eleven firefighters per day. We would need to hire thirteen firefighters to reach the goal of point six-six firefighters per one thousand. We currently sit at point four per one thousand residents. We understand that the city does not have the financial means to get there today, but if we don't start hiring and incrementally adding firefighters, then we, the fire department, will never catch up. The fire department has maintained a staff of twenty personnel with two-person engine company staffing since two thousand thirteen. We are long overdue in hiring additional firefighters. The two-person staffing model does not exist for a city of our size. In Placerville County, the other fire departments not only run three per engine, but most Placerville County agencies employ paramedics and provide advanced life support. We ran approximately fifty-four hundred calls last year, and we currently are on pace to beat that. The fire department regularly relies on mutual aid from neighboring fire departments to run calls in our city. As our three engines are often all committed to incidents due to our extremely low staffing. We understand that both police and fire are in need of additional personnel. We are in a much better financial position currently than years past, and much of that is due to the hard work completed by city manager Jennifer Hanson. In securing the public safety take, tax sharing agreement with the county. While the fire department has recently applied for a safer grant to fund additional firefighter positions for three years. We are in no way guaranteed to receive the grant as thousands of departments apply every year. And with that, we should find out in September or October. If and when we'll get awarded that grant. Uh, we just request that if the safer grant is not awarded, that there's a plan to, or there's a plan in place to build the fire department. If we do our word of the grant, or if we are, are word of the grant, it would be pretty unlikely that we would get the grant two consecutive years in a row for six years. So the Placerville County Board of Supervisors agreed to the tax sharing agreement in order to assist the city of Lincoln with its dismal public safety levels in both police and fire. Also to ease some of the burden the city puts on our neighboring agencies through our regular mutual aid requests. Before you approve the twenty-one twenty-two budget tonight, we are asking city council if the city is truly spending the public safety tax sharing funds to help out public safety as a whole. Both the police and fire departments. As next year's budget stands tonight, the city will spend nine hundred and seventy-six thousand one hundred and twelve dollars of public tax sharing funds. And we, and will not be adding any firefighters to the city of Lincoln. The twenty-one twenty-two budget assumes a revenue of eight hundred and fifty thousand from the tax sharing agreement, leaving no future money for fire department personnel. We hope the council will take public safety. Chief Doug Lee's recommendation into consideration when voting on this item tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Yes, Samantha?
Yes, hello. I, um, my name is Samantha Hartley. I'm actually a wife to another firefighter in Lincoln. And I just want to say, as Evan Fattis stated, that since two thousand thirteen, our engines have been greatly understaffed. And with all of the new building that's going on in Lincoln, I'm failing to understand as a resident. How we are allowing so many more homes to be built and that will potentially be housing more residents within the next years. So, and multiple areas in Lincoln without taking into account the, the necessary increases in fire and police. It's irresponsible to allow that kind of growth without taking into account and planning the funding for this. And relying on this, the safer grant is, it's just a Band-Aid. First, you're not guaranteed to get it, and secondly, it runs out in three years, and then potentially you could get it again, but. That doesn't solve the issue. There, Lincoln needs to be taking police and fire very seriously. These men are way overworked. They're working way too hard for the number of residents that you have. And this is not something that Lincoln has. Addressed in, in the last seven years. It's. It's just very irresponsible from my point of view.
Thank you. Is there any, any further?
No, no hands are raised, Mayor.
All right. So I'd like to first bring it back to staff before bringing it back to the council. There were a few questions raised that I think could be helpful to maybe address. There was the question about the bonds from, I believe, Richard, right? The bond council. What, what's the status on that? I don't know if it's appropriate to give a quick update on that or not. There was a discussion of what the American Rescue Plan Act funds can be used for, and I think that actually does get wrapped into a lot of, a lot of this. But maybe just a real brief overview if necessary, if you want to. And, and then I also thought it might be helpful because I do hear the concern of that last resident, and I can understand it. But I also think that council has actually taken quite a few steps and in. Planning for future development and not putting us in the same situation that other households have in terms of paying into a public safety element and. Really trying to plan out for the future load so that that. Future build-out doesn't have that same. Inadequacy in planning that we are experiencing in some of it. So if you could maybe speak to that, because I know it doesn't actually go a long way to saying, hey, it's solved, but I think does at least. And demonstrate some of where the council's thinking is and, and what we're trying to accomplish.
Right, Mayor. And Gary, would you like me to handle the questions, or would you like to do it?
I can just say briefly about the American. Rescue Plan Act, according to some of the. Notes I've taken, use of funds can be respond to the COVID nineteen emergency. And address its economic effects, including through aid to households, small businesses, nonprofits, and industries such as tourism, hospitality. You can also provide premium pay to essential employees or grants to their employers. Premium pay couldn't exceed thirteen dollars per hour or twenty-five thousand dollars per worker. You can provide government services affected by a revenue reduction resulting from COVID nineteen. And you can make investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. Now, the. Providing government services affected by revenue reduction, you have to take your fiscal year general revenue for two thousand nineteen, because that's the last fiscal year before the COVID started in March of two thousand twenty. And I guess they've got some guidance on calculating if you've lost revenue or not. So that would be one of the first calculations we would have to do to see if we actually lost revenue due to COVID. It, it may turn out that we didn't lose any revenue as far as that calculation goes, but those are the. The, the major items that you can use the American Rescue Plan Act for. And like I say, we're still waiting on. There's interim guidance, and I think a lot of people waiting on final guidance and actually how to allocate this out.
Correct. And so one, one of the things staff has done as we have coordinated with our internal and external partners, so all internal departments as well as our external depart, or external partners such as the White House or the salt mine. To gain a better understanding of what the needs are associated with impacts of the virus or the pandemic economic impacts. As well as some. as well as some mental health impacts. It is understanding that there's been unfortunately, some fairly severe mental health impacts have been associated with all the closures and everything that's been happening. So what the plan is, is once we receive all the input, the guidance is released. We have a better understanding what Placer County is going to do with the seventy seven million dollars they, they received. Then council will go through a series of discussions to identify their priorities for expenditure of those funds. As Mr. Leishamot stated, the funds will come in two tranches, which essentially means the payment will be split half and over two different periods. The state of California can apply to the treasury for a waiver of expenditure of the, those funds or the dispersment of the first tranche of those funds. We're not quite clear on whether that's going to happen or not, so we're still in a little bit of a waiting period regarding the use of those funds. So stay tuned. That will come back before the city council and the public for additional input sometime in the near future when we find out just a little bit more information. There was some additional guidance that got released this morning, but I frankly haven't had an opportunity to read it. But I do anticipate that staff will have that on the front burner and will be coming forward to city council with some recommendations. I think that the second question I heard was from Treasurer Pearl regarding the bond proceeds. We provided quite a few updates regarding bond proceeds at the fire committee. Most recently, some of the bond proceeds were expended on the joiner Parkway widening project and specifically putting in the missing sidewalks on Twelve Bridges Drive as well as east joiner Parkway, and so that some of the funds have been expended, but there still needs to be some action taken that will be taken up hopefully in the near term. And then I think that the final question, and correct me if I'm wrong or missing anything, was regarding to was regarded to the concern about why are we considering letting new development occur with new homes being built when we have these public safety issues, which is a really good question. One of the things that the city council did in two thousand eighteen is adopt a community facilities district for the specific purpose of public safety. So new homes, and now these are not homes that are being built out for the most part in the Twelve Bridges specific plan area. Those home already had entitlements, improved specific plans and project documents from a long time ago, so we weren't able to make them annex into the CFD with the exception of a couple of the villages that provide or requested zoning modifications. We have made them annex into the CFD. But what this public safety CFD is intended to do is to provide revenue that is supposed to cover the gap between the revenues that are related to any specific parcel within the CFD from property tax and sales tax and the cost of provide public safety services to those particular parcels. So when a parcel annexes into the CFD and then the building permits pulled and that house actually gets placed on Placer County's tax rolls, then we will start seeing revenue associated with that safe CFD for public safety service levels come in from those parcels. One of the delays has simply been because of the timing of pulling of the building permits and when those homes get placed on the tax rolls, which doesn't happen until they're actually occupied. And so when moving forward into the future, private homes that are in Village One, some of these infill projects start going on in Meadowlands, they will actually serve to increase our current average ability to provide both police and fire services. So the homes in Twelve Bridges aren't in stifties, but all the other new homes are. So that will assist with public safety revenues and our ability to provide those service levels. And did I miss any other questions?
No, the only other comment I was gonna have was, Mr. Garrett Bedian did make mention of it becomes like he had questions about needing to know about mutual aid and response times, and it made me think of that really great report that Chief Lee always gives out to us that has the PowerPoint where it goes over exactly all of those things. Is that, is there a link to that? That can be sent to Mr. Garrett Bedian so that he can like see it?
There sure is. It was just recently provided, I want to say maybe a couple of months ago in a city council workshop, and we can certainly provide that link to Mr. Garrett Bedian.
I think that that will answer a lot of his questions and that's go through just for other, your reference, like what types of calls and the majority of fire are in police, it really breaks it down. And I think it's actually really relevant to the discussion tonight about where the investments are, are targeting. All right, so if we're done with the public comment, thank you very much for answering those questions. We'll bring it back to the council for discussion. Um, I don't know that we need to go one by one. I don't know if someone wants to start it off or if there's any further need for comment or where people are on things. I know that Councilwoman Andriata sounded like she still had something she wanted to say, but wanted to get through questions first, so maybe we'll start there.
Oh, thanks. Um, you know what? I don't have anything new to say. I, I'm just gonna come back around to the fact that I would, I would like, I would like an explanation and, and I honestly, this is not meant to be accusatory in any way, but in light of Evan Fattis's comments and kind of my comments earlier, when, when it was requested for three firefighters to be in the budget and then it got changed, and I understand the reasoning behind it, but there was no like communication, it just got published. And I mean, again, that's very disconcerting. So I'm just wondering if, if somebody can address that, like, you know, why wasn't there a conversation had with the fire department about that? And then I'm just gonna reiterate what I said, that I pray to God we get the safer grant, but we still have to start working at it on our own and I'm, I'm, again, I'm all for police. I, this is not about like choosing one over the other. I know sometimes we have to do that, but I, again, we have, we, we, I know, I don't like the term, but we have kicked this can down the road and I keep hearing the same thing. Well, we just can't afford it. We just can't afford it. And the fire guys have been dealing with this two man on a truck forever and it's really unsafe. And, you know, when times were hard, they gave and gave and gave. And now I feel like we need to step up and find a way to start working on it. And I, so I don't know how to say it any stronger, that if we don't get the safer grant, then I really want some assurances that we're, we're gonna be willing to come back and do something different. I don't know exactly how we would do that, but I'm, I'm just really uncomfortable with leaving it like this. So that's it.
I would make the comment, and you're not wrong in that, you know, and this happens at local level, at the state level, when there's additional funds, then there is still a limited funds on there. A lot of priorities that need to be funded and somebody at the end of the day is going to be left out of that round of funding. And so for the public safety reasons, like for me, and I, you know, I got a lot of emails about, about the, the diversion of, of priorities and where those funds were going to be allocated. And so I circled back and I circled back with Ms. Hanson and I circled back with Chief Lee and soon to be Chief Alves and wanting just to make sure, noting that we are understaffed and critically understaffed on both sides. And that that is, my understanding is that really is still is derivative of the last recession when we had adequate levels and then we didn't have adequate funding and then we had to cut our adequate levels and it just takes a long time to build back. And there's not the funding to build back. And so we're doing what we can to fix our in, in systematic inadequacies and, and lack of funding and the tax share agreement with the county went a whole long way to try to help solve that. But at the end of the day, we only have a certain amount and a lot of it was in the arrears, which means that it really is that one time use. And so it is where those investments are going to be able to be made responsibly. So I get what you're saying that, you know, it's kicking the can down the road for fire. But if we had put those resources to three men on a fire, then it's gonna be the Police Officers Association accusing us of kicking the can down the road because the reality of the situation is, is we are making improvements in staffing our public safety, but we can't staff. It's a duality and they both matter the same. And we can't staff them both with the funding that we have. And so to be quite frank, we do have to kick the can down the road for another year because we can only choose one. And, and so then it is where is the most dire need and where is there the best pairing of investment? And so the questions that I asked actually did really satisfy me on it and that the safer grant is not a guarantee, but there isn't even the hope of a safer grant type program on the line enforcement side. And so there is a possibility and we have positioned ourselves much better this year to be able to receive those funds and there is more money for it. And my understanding is at that federal level, there, there's, there's a better chance that we could get it. And, and then that also doesn't have the, you know, match requirement. And so we have more of a chance to be able to actually be recipients of it. Whereas before we might not have. And so we have a stronger position on that. And then also that felonies have, I mean, during COVID and it's not just us, I mean, this, this is making it sound like, oh, don't come to Lincoln, but I can tell you it is a, it is a statewide problem during Cali, in California during COVID, you know, criminals aren't being booked. And so they're out on the streets and they know they're not being booked. And so it's upticked everywhere, including here. The problem is, is that here we're used to having pretty tame calls and it being relatively safe. It is not safe for our officers anymore and it, you can't have someone out there with no one to watch their back. You can't have potential pursuit and you can't do anything about it because you're one person. But let's like think about that from, they're one person. What if that person wasn't running from them? What if that person was running towards them and there's no one who can come to back them up? I mean, the, the, the dire need of like, of where those push points are happening. And I think that that shifted. And so I think that while the intent and I, my understanding, we had a conversation, my understanding, the whole time was the intent to fund fire. And if, uh, if they answer back from all, all involved, it was, nope, that that is absolutely still one hundred percent the, the best place for the funds, then I would have said, hey, then we need to not do this. But the fact of the matter is that they both need it. I think there's a commitment by, you know, I know there's a commitment that was told to me from the public safety chief and incoming chief in that duality and keeping the parity in that and, and trying to invest in both on an equal level because they both matter equally. But then also, um, you have citizens with armed weapons or not citizens. You have people in our city who are armed and you have no backup. And so for me, if I'm gonna have to kick one can down the road, I don't want it to be where I'm gonna get an email from our chief that we've unfortunately had an incident where someone had to be shot or they were, or they were shot and it was because I didn't invest properly. And so I get what you're saying and I am hundred percent committed to trying to make sure that we continue to bulk up fire because on the same token, we're entering a drought and we're entering a fire season. And those, uh, to, um, Mr. McFattis's point, you have to start building at some point because it doesn't build overnight, right? And so if we're going to continue into the future to make it safer, we need to start somewhere. But I just think that when you say kicking the can down the road, the truth of the matter is that either way we vote tonight, someone was gonna be in that position because we just don't have the resources tonight to not be.
Well, I understand that. And this is my last comment. I understand that, but the, the, what I don't get, and maybe it's, maybe I'm a little irritated about the communication also on top of it, is that as Evan said, that up until this week, they were told this was the request and then it got changed. And so nothing has changed between Tuesday and, or, you know, last week and now. Like the stats are still the same, the felonies are still the same, the hazards are still the same. And I get what you're saying. Nobody wants our officers to be in jeopardy, hundred percent not. But that it was, the, the chief had requested that, that was what it was. And then it got changed and there was no communication. And now we're like, well, we just can't afford it. So I'm, I'm kind of, I'm kind of really irritated about that. I don't think that's
I'd like to speak to that because it's not exactly true. So the budget does change all the way up until the very end of the budgeting process. And I can tell you that it's not just fire who's upset right now. A lot of people are upset. What, one of the things I think that where the nuance comes in is that it is a management right on how the budget gets distributed and what gets funded. And I would really caution this council for making a policy decision that that's ran through the unions. What I did do when I had understood that Mr. Fattis and fire were upset, as I sent them an email and said, please come talk to me. I'm more than happy to sit down with you and discuss the decisions that were made and why they were made. And I, you know, they're, they're busy or whatever happened. We, we didn't quite connect on that. So it's not exactly true that staff just, you know, that I wouldn't talk to them and just made a decision. That's, that is not the case that happened. And I can understand the frustration, but I can also tell you budgets come down to the wire and we were trying very hard to get a very complicated budget completed. And when we're finally done, it is a last minute. We're done. And there's a lot of people that we didn't call at the last minute saying, your project was out, this was out, that was out, this happened. And it's just kind of the way the budget process worked. However, like I said, I did contact fire myself directly to ask them if they wanted to come sit down. I said, I am around. Please stop by or contact me. And they didn't take me up on the offer. But you know, the other thing I wanted to point out is this conversation is spot on. It is extremely scary, the level of both police and fire we have. But that's also the reason why I keep drawing back to the priorities of the city and why it's so important that city council support those priorities of the city that have been already basically affirmed by city council. We have the priority list. So for example, one thing that keeps getting brought back up that directly impacts public safety is the location of the former skate park. It is now coming back up again that we should consider putting it back there. There's been discussions with both police and public works and they both indicate that it is, it's very much in a bad location just because of the lack of visibility. So it actually adds to public safety's workload and takes away from the two officers that we have. So I bring this up just to encourage the city council to continue to support getting the last bit of really difficult things done. Because I promise you, you are almost there. We are almost through this. We're almost through the hard financial time. It's gonna be a few more years. I understand fire's frustration. I personally worry about fire, personally worry about PD. That's the most horrible thing I can think of is to have to make one of those phone calls to their families. You're almost there. It's gonna be frustrating, but you've done a lot of really good work as a city council, a lot of really good work as a staff. And I just encourage you to continue to be patient for just a little bit longer.
Does, do any other council members have any, any concerns, questions? Are we good with the budget as proposed? Is there anything you'd like to comment before we entertain a motion? Want to make sure you're able to be heard.
This seems pretty minor, given the conversation that was just had. But as we take a look at the American Recovery Act funds, one of the standout phrases that you used, Gary, was underserved communities. And I don't know how we can link COVID to our underserved community with respect to public safety. But I think we ought to keep that in back of mind, see if there isn't a way that we can carve something out. It sounds like the state has the ability to make some adjustments in, in an area like that. So the very definition of underserved community applies to Lincoln, California with respect to public safety. Just saying. So as we move forward, if there's a way to carve out a little piece of that to help resolve these issues, we should be looking at it. That's it, mayor.
Anyone else? All right. Well, I appreciate the discussion because I think that these are hard topics and I think that this is when it is. On the one hand, I'm very excited to be having the conversation because we have funds we didn't have. And we have funds that we really, if we're being really honest, had a very like slim shot of getting. I mean, that, that we were able and to the county's credit and to, you know, Jen's credit and to all, you know, Councilman Fruskin in particular, were able to work through some really tough conversations and tough opposition. And they didn't have to approve that. But also they were, you know, it was a, it was not right the way that it was built. And so it was the right thing to do. But we didn't have any hope of having this conversation a year ago. And it was our top priority. It's been our top priority since I think that I got elected. So it took a while, right? And it, and I'm excited to have this difficult conversation because it isn't enough to fix the problem, but it is enough to start fixing the problem. And so this is where it is and a great thing to be able to make a difference and be in this role in a time when there are things that are, you know, positive investments. And then it's also when you kind of wish somebody else had run for office and is making the vote because you are, we are having to, you know, I mean, I really, I don't think there's anybody shy away from it. We are having to kick some can down the road because we don't have the right amount of resources to invest in both at the same time. But I do also want to make the note where we've talked about, okay, fire, police, fire, police. But really dispatch funds both. So we are putting investments for two of that funding to and, and they topped the list before we put any boots on the ground on either side because dispatch was so critically understaffed and underfunded, it was unconscionable. So I'm very excited to be able to vote for those positions and that is going to be a benefit to the residents. So I'm very excited to be able to vote for those positions and that is going to be a benefit to the residents and to both departments. And so I hope that both are seeing the investment, that that is a duality right there, that is for both. And then we are funding a permanent battalion chief. And so I understand that that's not on a fire engine itself, you know, and the, the, the sense of, you know, the boots on the ground, the way that's being talked about. But it is an additional staff on fire who is going to help with your departmental capacity. And it is an additional body to be able to help out and it is a significant permanent position. And so it really is two split, one fire, three police. And so I do want to make sure everyone is very clear on that, that we're not taking all the funds from the tax sharing agreement and putting 100% of them to one side and saying, okay, that's the best we can do end of the day. It really is to, I think the best that we can do, split down where the resources can make sense right now and going back to, like I said, on the, the dispatch calls and I, and I did after talking to, you know, our public safety chief and incoming chief. Uh, with the, the, the current environment throughout California, I almost don't even understand how people are signing up to be police officers. It's scary. And to leave them exposed when we could maybe um, beef that up, I think is a, a significant um, public safety, uh, it's our, it's a duty of ours to do. And so I don't have any qualms with the vote tonight. And I will though, Councilmember Underata, I want to make sure Claire, I personally, and I know that I think all of us are on the same page. We are committed to trying to get um, that fire beefed up as quickly as we possibly can. And if we don't get the safer grant, I, you won't be the only one who wants to come back and talk about what next.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Go for it.
I just want to thank Ruth Ann Codino. She's the one that put together all the slides and the budget document that you saw was attached to the staff report. She spent hours and hours doing this.
Ruth Ann is a hero. Actually, she does just like, I don't know how, when we're talking about, I, so I echo your thanks. And thank you for the reminder to extend it. Jen, you look like you really want to talk, so go for it.
There's just one little nuance. I want to make sure there is a mistake in the resolution and I wanted to catch it before motion was made so the
Thank you.
is aware. There was on the resolution, um, the revenues were indicated to be 103 million, 116,016 dollars, but it should actually be 104 million, 715,757. So I just want, it was a, it's a typo. So I wanted to make sure that that was captured properly during, when the motion was made.
So Chris, yeah, what, uh, what's the best uh, verbiage for the motion then? Would it just be as? Cause we would have, we would have to edit the resolution.
Right. It's, it's largely a clerical error, which staff can easily go back and revise um, before it's signed by the mayor. Um, and so if, if you want to make the motion noting the clerical error and authorizing its revision, then that would be fine.
Okay.
I'll do that.
And say, do we have a motion?
I move that we accept the fiscal year 2021, 22 annual budget as uh, with the necessary clerical corrections for the resolution.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Carl Skin?
Yes.
Councilmember Joyner?
Yes.
Councilmember Adriana?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawrenceon?
Yes.
And Mayor Silhaj?
Yes. All right. Thank you. Um, that was a nice discussion and I'm glad we were able to have it. Let's, um, it was a hard discussion, but it was a good one. And let's move along to um, 10C, uh, adopt resolution 2021-98, approving a revision to the salary schedules for the classification of Public Works Director. And um, Ms. Rodriguez will be giving our staff report.
Good evening, council members. Thank you. The item before you tonight is a request for consideration of a resolution approving a revision to the Public Works Director's salary schedule. A recent salary survey for comparable classifications in the region identified that the Public Works Director's salary is currently 15.36% below the median market. It's recommended that the salary for this position be increased to a maximum salary of 15,192 cents. The 2021 cost of this increase is $3,342.05. For 2122, the cost is $26,736.38 with no general fund impact. With that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Um, do we, uh, we'll go through again. So uh, Councilmember Underata, do we have any questions?
No, I, I understand this pretty well. Thank you.
Councilmember Joyner?
No questions.
Councilwoman Crosskin?
No questions.
Councilwoman Lawrenceon?
No questions.
I too have no questions. It was very straightforward and I appreciate that because um, it's nice to not have to have extraneous chatter. So let's open it up to the public.
Uh, Mayor, I do not have any hands raised.
All right, we will bring it back up to the bench and um, do we have any further comments or do I have a motion?
Motion to adopt resolution 2021-98, approving a revision to the salary schedules for the classification of Public Works Director.
Second, thank you. Want to get a roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Joyner?
Yes.
Councilmember Adriana?
Yes.
Councilmember Carl Skin?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawrenceon?
Yes.
And Mayor Silhaj?
Yes. All right, um, now we are going on to uh, one that is a little bit sad, but also exciting because we found a good interim. Uh, 10D, adopt resolution 2021-99, authorizing the mayor to execute a temporary employment agreement with Mark Scott to serve as interim city manager. And city attorney, Ms. Mollencop will be giving our staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. So yes, sadly, we are going to be losing our much beloved city manager, Jennifer Hansen, to the Nevada Irrigation District. Her final day with us will be uh, Monday, May 31st. And so the city council opened a recruitment and was extremely fortunate. And then on May 20th, in closed session, held interviews with some very qualified candidates. And one candidate came out of that uh, interview process, Mr. Mark Scott, who was most recently serving as the city manager in Indio. And so we entered, I, myself and the recruiter entered into negotiations with Mr. Scott. And before you is a proposed contract for his services. He is, because he is a retired annuitant, limited to 90, 960 hours per fiscal year. Because of some, um, there is a governor's order that lifted a lot of the retired annuitant limitations. But because of the June 15th um, changes that were anticipated, we, we kind of wanted to hedge our bets and make sure that we weren't going to fall afoul of the CalPERS requirements that um, we've actually worked out with him. He has ample number of hours starting June 7th to serve through the end of the fiscal year. And then he would start over again July 1st with his 960 hours. And so with that, staff at the direction of council is recommending that you approve the resolution for uh, approving the employment agreement, appointing Mr. Scott as our interim city manager effective June 7th and authorizing the mayor to execute that contract. And I'm happy to take any questions that may not have been answered either tonight or by way of the staff report.
Thank you. We'll go through um, and just see uh, the council first and then we'll open it up to the public. Councilmember Underata?
Nope, no questions. I'm good.
Councilmember Joyner?
Uh, no questions. I'm very pleased with the outcome of uh, the interview process and that uh, Mark is willing to come on board and share his, what, 30 some years of experience?
Forty-one, thirty.
Forty-one.
Yeah.
So is it 30 some as a manager?
Yep.
Yes.
Councilwoman Crosskin?
Um, I have no comments.
Councilwoman Lawrenceon?
I have no comments either and welcome to Mark Scott.
Let's open up to the public.
Mayor, I have no hands raised.
All right.
Oh, sorry, one came up. Richard, go ahead.
I think I just want to say that uh, years ago, uh, when I was doing some work for Beverly Hills, I had an opportunity uh, to interact with uh, Mr. Scott and uh, we, it's, it's a great selection. So congratulations to staff.
No other hands are raised, Mayor.
All right, we'll bring it back up here. All I'll say is I'd like to just thank Jen for all the hard work that she's done. Um, I, it's been a very, very heavy lift and I don't think we can say it enough how much um, you and your staff have worked to try to turn this city around over the last two years and how many major items of accomplishment that have been achieved under your um, purview, your direction, your guidance. And we are indebted to you for all of the things that have been accomplished. And I think that are in a good position to keep moving forward with Mr. Scott. He has incredible experience. Um, he was engaging. I'm excited to have him be interacting with staff and the residents. I think that, you know, um, if we're going to have a transition, it is nice to have someone coming in at least that I think will transition well. And will be able to pick up the baton and has had a lot of experience and a lot of the complex issues that we've talked about just tonight. I mean, we've talked about wastewater treatment, you know, expansions. We've talked about contract negotiation, like we've talked, you know, there was a question about bonds, I, all of the different varying things that are happening in the, in the city right now. He has experience in. And so um, I'm excited that it should be a pretty good transition over the next few months as we go on, we look for a permanent replacement, but did want to thank um, Jen for her commitment to the city and all the years that she's spent here and putting her heart and soul into it. Did anyone else want to comment before we take a motion?
Yeah, I would, I would just um, echo your comments. I mean, we owe a, a great debt of gratitude for Jennifer and all her hard work. And I thank her. And also I wanted to thank Christine for all her hard work with our recruiter to get um, the candidates that we had. I felt like we had a really great pool of candidates. And um, and, and Christine put a lot of work into that and I, I really appreciate that as well.
Mayor, if I may, and Mr. Scott is going to be wonderful for the city and wonderful for the staff. I, I really can't express the amount of relief I personally had um, when I've spoken with him. He is, he is very sharp, very bright. And as you said, he has seen it, done it. While I also wanted, um, just to take a moment to acknowledge staff, there has been a lot of really, really difficult, complicated things that have been completed. And it really has been simply because of their dedication. And it's every single department. They have continued, whether it's police, fire, public works, community development, finance, finance, or you know, they're the heroes of the city, of the inner workings of the city. Um, you know, they, people work day in and day out on a shoestring staffing levels. And I have never been more amazed at how much work that this staff gets done with how little staffing we have. And it really is a testament that you have a lot of A-plus students and they're wonderful. So I think with your guidance with Mr. Scott coming in, I'm really excited for the future of the city and I only see great things. And like I said, I know it's been frustrating, you know, we've butted heads over some of the tough issues, but I really do see light at the end of the tunnel. I think you guys are really, really close. And, and as a resident, I'm going to be cheering for you. So I'll still be here cheering and as I've always stated, whether it's staff, the council, or Mr. Scott, or the new um, city manager, I'm more than happy to always um, provide any information I possibly can help do for this transition.
Thank you. One more resident to tell us what they really think.
I'll try to keep it under three minutes.
No. I look forward to your input on the other side, Ms. Hanson. I just, it's been a pleasure. Um, any, anyone else?
And I, I didn't realize that this item was going to be a memorial. So I, I was going to say for information items and just uh, thank Jennifer for all of the thousands of hours that she's put in uh, seven days a week on power problems. She has, uh, you know, you hear the, a lot of people say that uh, devil's in the details. Well, Jennifer's in the details. She uh, understands and uh, has well, been, been involved in more levels of the city uh, than any city manager that I've seen in Lincoln historically. She was, she took over at a rough time. But that's her fault. She knew it was going to be a rough time. She rose to the challenge and beat down the state. Um, I personally have enjoyed strategizing and working on the site projects that we've had over the years. She's an inspiration to work with and an emperor, and from what I understand from her staff, she's an in- inspiration to work for also. So thank you and good luck, Jennifer. And uh, enjoy yourself.
Thank you.
And welcome, Mr. Scott.
Yeah. So so let me just um, echo the comments of, of my fellow council members. Jennifer came in uh, frankly, after two difficult rounds of recruitment that uh, did not bring a candidate that I think any of us could really support and uh, was willing to jump into the fire uh, that many others were not. And, and Jennifer, I'm gonna tell tales a little bit on you. She looked me in the eye before accepting the position and said, I want to know that each and every one of you council members has my back. Because by the time we're done doing what we have to do, everybody's gonna hate me. Well, Jennifer, everybody doesn't hate you. It's worked out pretty well. And, and um, so I want to thank you for for the amount of brain power and time. Uh, you've given this role, uh, the depth of your research to come to your conclusions. But I also want to thank, and we so often forget to do this, the very young family that you have, that was willing to share you with us for this time. So I wish you the best of luck moving forward with NID. Uh, I hope that we don't come up against you in negotiations over uh, some type of water district issues, but uh,
I'll be nice.
And thank you. I know we might.
Thank you, Councilmember Joyner. I appreciate it.
I got one last uh, mention for Jennifer. I want to thank you for helping me uh, learn the operations of the city. And I think uh, NID is going to be very, very pleased with you and I hope you, hope, and I wish you a lot of luck there. And since I'm the rep for NID, we'll be working with you again.
And look forward to it.
Yes, like I told her, um, she thinks that she's escaping me. However, what she's doing is she's now managing or for one of my members at work in my issue area and she'll probably be bothered by me daily.
And I just want to also give my sincerest thanks to the city council. I know as Councilman Carl Skin said, I can be a devil with the details or maybe better put a devil in the details. So I know that I have a lot of energy that can be a little overwhelming. So thank you for putting up with me, being patient. And you truly have been part of a very important time in my career and professional growth. And like I said, the city's going to be great. Just give it a couple more years and you're going to be there. And when we have a revenue ribbon cutting, I expect to be invited.
I love it. Do I have a motion to um, approve the agreement with Mr. Mark Scott, um, that I think we're very fortunate to bring on board?
Yeah, I make the motion to adopt resolution 2021-99, authorizing the mayor to execute a temporary employment agreement with Mark Scott to serve as interim city manager.
Awesome.
There we go. Can I get a roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Adriana?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawrenceon?
Yes.
Councilmember Joyner?
Yes.
Councilmember Carl Skin?
Absolutely.
And Mayor Silhaj?
Yes. All right, um, moving along to council initiated business. Do any of my colleagues?
Regional sewer update.
Did I skip one? Hold on, I might have gone to, oh, I did. I scrolled down too far. Thank you. All right. Moving along, not quite to council initiated business, but item 10E, the regional sewer update by Ms. Hanson.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, Ms. Brown, if that works. Let's see here. And I promised to make this brief. I know that everyone is really ready to be over the era of hearing me talk really fast and too much. So I will uh, make this as quick as possible. Am I, am I sharing this well? Okay, should be. All right. So we did have a conversation earlier with a previous item related to the capital improvement project construction contract that All right, so we did have a conversation earlier with a previous item related to the capital improvement project construction contract that council approved by resolution earlier this evening. So I'll make this very brief. The intention of this particular presentation is essentially to provide a update to the city council as well as to our residents of where we are at with resolving some of the issues related to the regional sewer project or what's affectionately known as the COJA, the Construction Operations and Joint Exercise Agreement. So let's see. All right, I'm gonna, and like I said, we've talked about a lot of this, so I'll just kind of clip through it, but by any means, please stop me if you have any questions midstream. So we're currently in negotiations, um primarily a new agreement as Councilmember Carl Skent as well as Councilmember Lawrenceon are aware. Um, it does look pretty good to enter into a new agreement and form an actual joint powers authority. We currently have a joint power agreement. The primary difference is, is the authority is actually an entity that would run um the regional sewer, which currently consists of the SMD one pump station in Auburn, the fourteen miles of Forest Main, and then the regional um treatment facility out off Fittament Road. So the negotiations aren't going, so I'll kind of split it off into two different sections. One is kind of resolving these past finance, past and current financial issues we have. And then, like I said earlier, I think the easy part is moving forward and getting a JPA. I don't see any issues with that. So we do have an issue with um currently Lincoln rate payers are subsidizing rate payers in North Auburn. Um, this is causing issues with us being able to adopt Prop two eighteen compliant rates for our wastewater rate pairs. We have a capacity problem. We have developed pre-purchased capacity, but county pre-purchased capacity. And then we have these kind of first cur- first come, first served capacity that's associated with um new building permits that are wrapped up in previous crediting, crediting associated development agreements. We need to expand the plant and it needs to happen immediately. And in order to do that, we need to do a bond issuance. But we can't meet the underwriting requirement for the bonds until the new rates are adopted. And then lastly, there is this status of the future governance. We agree with the county on a lot of things. You know, there, there are some very contentious things and those are mostly financially related. Um, however, there are a lot of things that we agree at the staff level um regarding, and that's, yes, we need a new agreement. Forming an actual authority under the JPA is probably the right way to go. We would like to have a sustainable rate structure where rate payers are paying the same for treatment at the plant. Um, whether you're live in the county or you live in the city of Lincoln. And then the rate should also include reserves for funding of CIP projects as well as just for cash flow. We all agree as well, it hasn't been memorialized by any board or council action that is probably more appropriate for the county to maintain SMD one. Currently, the city is maintaining SMD one pump station as well as the fourteen miles of Forest Main. They are within the county jurisdiction, so it does make more sense. As well, it will allow the county to be able to conduct better cost control because they would be responsible for their own destiny. Kind of the outstanding issues are what we talked about before. It's capacity, ongoing rate payer subsidy. And then there is dispute regarding how much capacity the county actually purchased. And so those are still the things that need to be completed. When we reference a sustainable rate structure, it needs to be something that both agencies can rely upon to adopt Prop two eighteen compliant rates. Um, and that says complaint rates, as you could say, compliant rates. However, the city is responsible for adopting our own rate structure and then the county is responsible for adopting their own rate structure. Already references to take into consideration reserves and capital replacement. And then all rate pairs, the idea would be that you would pay the same on a monthly basis for your use of the wastewater treatment reclamation facility. And then we would be doing regular uh repair and restoration that you would do in any other enterprise fund. Currently, the county pays in the rears about six months after the close of the fiscal year. And for example, um through June thirty of twenty twenty, the county sheriff capital improvement projects was about four hundred forty thousand dollars. So currently, because they're paying in the rears, we cash flow everything. We also cash flow the reserves needed just for capital projects in general. A good rule of thumb is for reserve levels, you would like ninety days of cash on hand for ninety days of operational expenditures of cash on hand for cash flow for operations. And then you should ideally have a one year of construction funds on hand that is equal to the five-year annual average of capital expenditures. And that currently isn't contemplated in either party's rate structure, so that should be addressed. So the capacity background, um, you know, the, the plant is essentially overcapacity right now and it's overcapacity in terms of BOD, which is biological oxygen demand, which as I stated earlier, is how we measure how much loading or um solids can be treated at the plant on any particular day is really originally designed for fourteen thousand pounds and we're currently treating more than that. So the capacity is defined as an equivalent dwelling unit and this is included in the COJA. Currently, equivalent dwelling unit is two hundred fifteen gallons of basically flow per day and a half pound of biological oxygen man or solids per day. Currently, we're constrained by loading. So the pre-cure purchase capacity, so we currently have a design capacity of fourteen thousand pounds per day and we're operating at fourteen thousand five hundred seventy-six pounds per day. So this is where we're starting to get nervous is in this, this actual operational capacity. So what we're looking at is the problem is, is not only are we overcapacity right now, we also have all of these prepaid or pre-purchased connections that are not yet connected. So the county, per the COJA, they have rights to purchase point four MGD or milling gowns per day, which is about nine hundred thirty pounds per day. However, the capacity or connection fee that they paid is at dispute. We do not feel that they actually paid for that. And then the city, we have in unconnected connections about seven hundred thirty pounds per day. And if you kind of look, one of the issues that's causing the capacity, and I won't dive into the details here because it does, it can be a little nuanced and probably boring at this point. Um, we are seeing a pretty good clip of average increase in BOD capacity. And essentially what we're seeing is remember I said a normal EDU is about half pound of BOD per equivalent dwelling unit per day. County's running about point six five pounds of BOD per equivalent dwelling unit per day. And the city is actually running around point four three pounds of BOD per equivalent dwelling unit per day. And the reason why this is different, and this is one of the things that's at dispute with the county. But one of the reasons why we have a fundamentally lower BOD average per equivalent dwelling unit is because we have such a large population of active adult homes that they are drawing our average down. So we have seven thousand active adult homes at the Lincoln Hills and they simply do not use the sewer as someone at, at my family size of three kids. Um, you know, my dishwasher and washing machine and we're constantly using garbage disposal. We use the sewer at a much higher rate than somebody who is a single per, a single older person up in Lincoln Hills, which is that average demographic. They're using something much less. So our active adult homes are drawing our average down. I do anticipate that over time, as we are pulling on more non-active adult, single-family residential homes, our average is going to increase. So right now, essentially, um, some of the overage that the county is using is being offset by our underuse. But I anticipate over time, Lincoln's usage is going to be going up and be normalizing to more around the point five range. Um, simply because we will have less of our homes will be taken up by the active adult community. But also because of the new organic regulations that are coming on board. Those will also require that organic material or food waste gets picked up at the residential level, which in we are projecting that people will start using the garbage disposal more because there will be some people who, you know, don't want to save the leftover chili for a week and put it in the garbage can for it to be picked up and will simply put it down the drain. So my point in telling everyone that is I don't, we cannot bank on Lincoln's under-usage of BOD capacity to continue to offset this issue for a long-term basis. I think that there are some methods that we can do to kind of buy us time. And we have been working on those methods involves doing some peak flow shaving, which I think is a legitimate way to go. We've been working with the plant operator. But it is something that I want to make sure is on everybody's forefront as a priority. So in looking at the connections, um, the city has about twenty-one thousand connections and the county has about eighty-two hundred connections. So in talking about the capacity, um, the county is using some of the city's capacity as well as part of their additional capacity that they purchased. Um, the city could continue to accommodate the city prepays. Um, if the county was not using capacity, so that is something to be noted. We, the city would be able to come um or allow for the prepaid connections to continue to connect with no moratorium. Um, if some of the overage wasn't being used by the county right now, the plant needs immediate expansion. Um, it is definitely, should be noted that the plant probably operates more efficiently than it is rated for. So we are completing some efficiency analysis and we have come up with some methodology or um operation methods to be able to kind of bridge this gap into the future until such time the plant can be expanded. And then at the current rate, you know, prepaid capacity and to this excess capacity that we're essentially borrowing against will run out within two to three years. And this is all dependent upon when this runs out, is all dependent upon the absorption rate of single-family or residential units, both within the county's jurisdiction as well as the cities. So the facility expansion, uh, we have the project plans done. The only thing that they're reading for is actually for the bonds to be issued. The city does not have the cash available to pay cash for the facility expansion and is in the position of needing to complete a revenue bond issuance that would be backed by the wastewater enterprise funds. Additionally, we do have the oxidation ditch uh repairs that I referenced earlier and those are in dire need of being completed. Good news is that city council took the biggest action this evening to get that project moving forward. One of the issues I spoke about earlier, which is really kind of the linchpin of fixing a lot of these things, is this reconciliation of the five-year of costs. So to date, um, the city rate payers have been subsidizing county rate payers. And these are the total amounts. The total operational subsidy date is about eight hundred and three thousand dollars. This does not include any capital improvement projects. Um, so if you recall, the county typically will pay for most capital improvement projects. They might not always agree to the uh methodology in the COJA under which the cost proportioning is calculated under. But they do pay some or all of that cost, but it is still an issue because it isn't paid till well after the end of the fiscal year. They have indicated that they are open to the discussion of not paying in the rears, um, which will be helpful and is much needed to be completed. One of the things that I thought was interesting, so I was trying to understand where the subsidy is occurring. And so I did a breakdown based off of the nineteen twenty actual numbers. So for nineteen twenty, the operational subsidy was around four hundred two thousand dollars. So Lincoln rate payer subsidized county rate payers to the tune of about four hundred two thousand dollars for that year. So this broke down that city rate payers are subsidizing county rate payers a total of four dollars and eighty-nine cents per county EDU for the plant. So for those eight thousand um EDUs that they have, a thousand or so equivalent dwelling units that they have up there or customers, Lincoln rate payers are paying about, oh, you know, a little shy of five dollars per one, each one of those. Where the real subsidy is coming in is the operations of SMD one. We are currently, city rate payers are currently subsidizing county rate payers to the tune of forty-three dollars and seventy-six cents per year per a county EDU for SMD one. So this in my mind is a highly prob- problematic um area and should definitely be a focus of trying to get this resolved. It has to be resolved. Um, it would be not in compliance with Prop two eighteen for city rate payers or for the city have intended by entering into that agreement for city rate payers to subsidize county rate payers for the sole operation of SMD one sewer pump station, which is located in North Auburn off Belt Road, which we receive absolutely zero benefit for. There is a uh light at the end of the tunnel and that is essentially to go forward and im- implement the annual operation charge indexing calculation as I believe was intended within the current COJA agreement. And so city staff is busy doing a revision of all previous ordinances and will be sending those to the county. This is still subject to dispute. The county does not agree to this. But this is part of kind of marching through all the dispute resolution uh requirements so that we can eventually get ourselves to a plate where we agree or where we are teed up to take legal action. And with that, I just wanted to provide a quick update um prior to my departure of where we're at so that um we're all on the same page. And, you know, I am hopeful that these things will get resolved. Um, there's still being work through. There's been lots of great progress made to date. I'm very hopeful. I do not think it's gonna be difficult for a joint power authority to be formed. Um, we really need to focus on kind of these operational charges and calculations so that we can get for, move forward our rates and then move forward the bond issuance. And with that, I can answer any questions that city council has. I apologize if I kind of went through that quickly. I don't want to bore everyone to death.
Oh, thank you. Um, I think it built upon our earlier conversation after the um item that was pulled from consent. Well, I will go through, starting with Councilmember Andriata.
Now, thank you very much for that very thorough um recap. I really appreciate it. And we've been talking about this for a long time, so I don't have any questions, but thank you very much for the information. And I think that's actually good too for the public to hear all that. Um, and get an understanding of what's been going on. So thank you so much.
Yeah, particularly the graphic that had the, the rate of subsidization. It's upsetting. Um, Councilmember Joyner.
Uh, no questions. I agree. We've been going over this uh again and again uh for some time, but I, it's helpful to have the recap uh and the, the subtle reminders of, of the nuances of all of this, but I think uh, the mayor is correct. It's, it's really helpful for the public uh to hear what we've heard uh so many times and, and to begin to understand the challenge.
Councilmember Crosskin.
Yeah, I see this stuff in my sleep, but there was the slide. Probably second to last slide where Jennifer showed the breakdown between our subsidization, subsidization of the uh uh county for operations costs versus the county for uh SMD one operations. When she showed that, and I think the COJA meeting, it really set at least one of the supervisors back on his uh, on his heels. Because he had heard numbers, but it was never laid out like that. I was very surprised that something that they'd already said they should be they should essentially own and be maintaining was very thing that is costing our rate payers so much money. So that addition, which is a relatively late addition to the slides really was impactful to him. Anyway, I uh I agree with Paul in that it's good for the general public to, to see these things we allude to all the time. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I totally agree with uh Councilman Carl Skent. And for me, it's, it's, it's more like a nightmare than a dream. Uh, but yeah, I've been heavily involved with this, so uh I think, I thank uh Jennifer for the update. You know, it's, it's a good uh, it's a good update, basically.
Thank you. And let's go out to a public front.
Yes, Mayor, I do have one hand raised. Matt, Mike Garabedian, please go ahead.
Thank you. I have a question and kind of an observation. Uh, I'm wondering how many mewing gowns per day uh it is, the, the facility is. Uh, and I'm asking that because once it says five MGD, it automatically requires an industrial pretreatment program. And so the question there is, I mean, there are perhaps as many as fifty national categorical standard type industries that include things you might not think of from dentist office, just the various things. Uh, but obviously things like electroplating, metal finishing and so forth. Uh, so the, the question I'm, the thing in my mind issue and uh maybe we don't know the answer here is um uh, if the, if industrial pretreatment was implemented, how would it manage uh facilities in, in the, in uh Auburn? Uh, what, since it would be probably a, a plant-wide um issue. And then I guess the question is, are there any significant SIUs up there? So I wanted to bring that up and find it, find out for further discussion or see what we know now about uh the necess- necessity for an industrial pretreatment program, if there is one. Thanks.
No other hands are raised, Mayor.
Mayor, if you'd like, I could answer that question. So the, the city does have an industrial pretreatment program as well as the county and they, both agencies. And they, both agencies have adopted the required ordinances and do the required inspections. We work really well with the county regarding that particular issue. So it is per regulation requirements.
Thank you. And let's bring it back. There's no actionable item on this, correct? So are my colleagues satisfied with their commentary? Shall we move along?
Yes.
All right, sounds good. Thank you for the report, Ms. Hanson. We'll move along to council-initiated business. Councilmember Andriata, do you have anything?
No business, no.
Councilmember Joyner?
I have none.
Councilwoman Crosskin?
None.
Councilmember Lawrenceon?
None.
And I have none. So we will move along to item 12, information items. Councilmember Andriata?
Yeah, I do have one. I just wanted to remind everybody that Thursday night is Potter's opening night. And so that's very exciting as things start to open up and get a little bit more normal. So I just wanted to let everybody know about that.
Thank you. Councilmember Joyner?
Holly, did you want to talk about the fireworks committee meeting and moving forward with fireworks as well?
Oh, sure. Yeah. So, yeah, I wasn't at the SCI meeting, but there was a really great meeting last week with city staff and the Fourth of July Foundation Committee. And the, the committee is working on, you know, checking off all those boxes and fundraising as well underway, doing really well on that. Got a lot of great business partners this year again. And so we're, we're moving forward. And so if, you know, if the council approves it when it comes up in June, they, they'll be good to go. They've got, they got everything lined up like they did last time for safety precautions and all that stuff. So it's very exciting. Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Joyner. I forgot all about that.
No. Information items, I have, I have none. Other than to say that, that I've been, I took a little vacation time in, in Texas and stole a lot of great ideas that I hope we can bring some of them back and, and implement in our own community. Always good to see what other folks are doing.
Definitely. Councilmember Crosskin?
I hope you didn't spend much time in Austin.
Not at all, not at all.
I have no items.
Councilmember Lawrenceon?
I guess we're still recruiting for the redistricting committee. And, and I, you know, I encourage everybody to contact Gwen and, and volunteer.
Thank you for that reminder. That was an important one. And I have nothing to bring to the table tonight aside from with all of those updates. We are adjourned. So thank you very much to everyone who hung in there. And thank you to staff for all of your great report outs.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you.